Special Town Meeting and the Annual Town Meeting, we do have a quorum. The Special Town Meeting shall now come to order. We have a return of the warrant by Constable Adam Loomis. I would entertain a motion to adjourn so that we may open the annual town meeting. Second, do I have a second? All those in favor? Opposed, that's a vote. A quorum being present, this annual town meeting shall now come to order. We have a return of the warrant by Constable Adam Loomis. As required by Massachusetts state law, Chief of the Fire Department, Scott Duffy, asked that I point out the exits from the auditorium in case of an emergency. Obviously, the two at the rear and the two down here. And now, I would call on Veterans Agent Tony McTurner to lead us in a salute to the flag. Would everyone please stand and remove your caps?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain, I'm sorry, please remain standing, my goodness. You're gonna sit long enough. I'd ask Reverend James Hickey of the Holy Family Church to come forward and give the invocation.
If we can stand for the flag, we can stand for God. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Let's just take a moment, I think one of the issues facing us as a community is the abuse of drugs and the cost that's happening to us, happening right now actually. So let's take a moment, ask the Lord to give wisdom to all of us, that this particular crisis may somehow ease. Maybe we could take a moment of quiet, ask Him to bless our town. Shall we do that? My God, you know our thoughts, you know who we are. We just said that we are one nation under your authority and care. So we ask you blessing on this meeting, in all that will happen, and all the decisions made, and on all our people, that peace may abide among us, and that we may have the consolation of your spirit, especially when we're in crisis and in trouble and facing death and fear, and that we may have the courage to be the people you have made us to be, a true people, a nation under God, a democracy, a people who seek the truth and follow after it. We ask you this through Christ our Lord, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Please don't sit down yet. We'll now have a moment of silence as I read the list of deceased town officials. Anthony Delpreet, Robert Condon, James Bullman, Thomas Furlong, Robert Hussey, Priscilla Delpreet, Dorothy Placente, Jean Tweed, Mary Pat Casnick, Dorothy Folsom, and Alfred Giannotti. Thank you. Now you can sit down. This Special Town Meeting and the Annual Town Meeting are being videotaped by WRPS. I would ask if any, all non-registered voters must sit in the front rows to my left. I'd like to welcome everyone for coming to tonight's town meeting. I know that everyone has a busy schedule these days, and it's so important that we be able to continue with doing the business of the town for the upcoming year. As you know, Article 29 of the 2013 Annual Town Meeting reduced the quorum to open a town meeting to 150 registered voters, with only 50 registered voters need to be present at this session or any adjourned session. This was approved by the Attorney General on July 26, 2013. If you wish to speak on an article tonight, please raise your hand. When I recognize you, please come to one of the microphones down front, state your name and address before speaking. Each speaker will be allowed up to five minutes when speaking on a budget item or article which is being acted upon. No speaker who has previously spoken on the same budget item or article will be recognized until all others who wish to speak have had their opportunity. Now I'd like to introduce the people on the stage. To my immediate left is Eric Hart, the town accountant. Donna Shortall, the town clerk. Victoria Dybell, the assistant town clerk. Jamie Kenny, assistant town council. Town Council John Clifford. And our town administrator Alan Chalka. I don't know if our two, State Senator John Keenan is here, or...
He is, he's in the back.
John Keenan, are you here? John Keenan is in the back. Thank you very much for coming. And David DeCoste, our state rep. I think he has the town meeting in Norwell tonight. Now I'd like to introduce the newly elected officials that were just on April 10th. Please hold your applause until I read the list. For the Board of Selectmen, Edward Kimball, Larry Ryan, and Mike Mullin Jr. For the Board of Assessors, Heidi Hosmer. Board of Health, Patricia Halliday. New Highway Superintendent David Taylor Jr. Board of Library Trustees, Janet Kahn and John Ward. Park Commissioner Richard Furlong. Planning Board Member John Lucas. School Committee Members, Richard Phelps and Daniel Biggins. Saw Commissioner Ron Savicki. Water Commissioner Bill Cormier Jr. And the Town Moderator, me. I'd like to also extend everyone's best wishes to longtime Selectman Larry Chaffey, who served as a selectman for 28 years. Was first elected in April of 1988 and resigned effective April 9, 2016. He's been in the South Shore Rehab Center on 115 North Avenue in Rockland for over a year, and I'm sure in all those years, except for last year, that Larry never missed a town meeting. Now I'd like to introduce the Finance Committee, and again, please hold your applause until after I've read their names. And before I read their names, the citizens of Rockland should be proud of all the hard work that this Finance Committee has done to prepare the budget prior to this town meeting, so that the voters have the correct and concise information as we progress through town meeting. The Finance Committee along with the Town Accountant Eric Hart, the Town Administrator Alan Chalka, and all of the department heads work on a daily and weekly basis for the best interest of the entire town. And I'd like to have the Finance Committee stand up when I read your names. Michael O'Laughlin Chairman, Jesse McSweeney Vice Chairman, Richard Dunham Secretary, Bill Allen, Joseph Gambon, Robert McDonald, Jamie Potter, Richard Penny, Bill Principi, John Pumphrey, Julia Schaefer, and Kenneth Tochi. Thank you very much. And now I'm gonna call on Finance Committee Chairman Michael O'Laughlin for his opening speech.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Michael O'Laughlin, I'm the Chairman of the Finance Committee. This evening, we'll be voting on the articles in the Special Town Meeting warrant for fiscal year 2016, and the articles in the Annual Town Meeting warrant for fiscal year 2017. We as a committee have reviewed all the departmental budgets and have tried to allocate our available resources in a prudent fashion, and have tried to continue the funding of capital improvement needs, primarily through the use of free cash and other funding sources. Continuing with our goal of planning for our future capital improvement needs, we will once again put before your request to set aside $300,000 from available free cash into a stabilization fund created in 2012. This fund will have an accumulated balance of $921,572, still short of our goal of 3% of our operational budget, but well on the way to establishing an important benchmark. I want to thank the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator Alan Chalka, Town Accountant Eric Hart, and all the department heads for your assistance in creating this budget. Without your cooperation, the creation of this document would be much more difficult. Most importantly, I'd like to thank you, the residents of Rockland, for really coming out to support this tonight, your continued support and your participation this evening. Lastly, I'd like to thank the members of the Finance Committee for their volunteerism, their selflessness. I want to thank each and every one of you for what you've contributed week after week in creating this year's warrant. We had some spirited debates in creating this budget, and I think it's a warrant that the community will be very proud of. Before we begin the town meeting, the Finance Committee would like to ask, similar to what Father Hickey said, that we remember all the members of our community that have passed away while battling addiction this year. Additionally, as part of the Finance Committee budget deliberations, the members are cognizant of the opiate addiction in our community. We understand that public safety departments and the school department work very hard to fight this dreaded disease, and to that point, it has hit the Finance Committee hard this year, with the death of Bobby McDonald, the son of longtime Finance Committee Member Bobby McDonald.
Thank you. And now, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the annual town meeting for the purpose of returning to the Special Town Meeting. Second, all those in favor? All those opposed, that's a vote. A quorum being present, I will now call the Special Town Meeting to order. Mr. O'Laughlin.
I'd like to make a motion that the first action on each article be based on the Finance Committee recommendation.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote.
I'd also like to make a motion to take all articles in the order in which they are printed.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. All right, go to the Special Town Meeting Warrant, Article Number One. Will the town vote to take from available funds a sum of $25,000 to purchase a used fire engine or take any other action relative thereto? The emergency, the opportunity arose to obtain a used fire engine from Hanover prior to disposal in an extremely discounted amount, subsequent to the previous annual town meeting with the agreement that we replace it in our Special Town Meeting for immediate funding. The Finance Committee recommends approval as a transfer from the health insurance line item. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Number Two. Will the town vote to transfer from and to the following appropriations as listed below or take any other action relative thereto? Health insurance, from health insurance to school expenditures, $93,000. From health insurance to police sundries, $20,000. Health insurance from elections, $10,000, for a total of $123,000. The above listed appropriations were identified as having surplus available, and the others in risk of deficit and will need to be transferred prior to the fiscal year end. The Finance Committee recommends a transfer from the health insurance line item. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Number Three. Will the town vote to transfer from available funds a sum of $400,000 to snow and ice or take any other action relative thereto? The emergency snow and ice, actual expenditures exceeded the budget. Finance Committee recommends the money to be approved and taken from undesignedated fund balance. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Number Four. Will the town vote to transfer from available funds to pay unpaid, an unpaid bill of prior years as listed below or take any other action relative thereto? From health insurance to elections, the amount of $1,430. The above listed appropriations were identified as unpaid for prior fiscal years. Finance Committee recommends a transfer from the health insurance line item. I do need a nine tenths vote, I'd like to have unanimous. All those in favor of approving this article signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Number Five has been withdrawn as per the Department of Revenue. Anybody have any questions? Okay. Article Number Six. Will the town vote to transfer from available funds a sum of $300,000 to the stabilization fund or take any other action relative thereto? Transfer as prior to year end and prove the town's financial position as reported to outside agencies. The Finance Committee recommends funding $242,000 from undesignedated fund balance, $38,000 from overlay surplus, and $20,000 from the health insurance line item. All those in favor adopting the article signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Number Seven. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $20,000 to fund the purchase and installation of an emergency power generator and matching switchgear at the Esten School or take any other action relative thereto? The emergency is the generator failed recently, causing loss of power for key components of the school. The Finance Committee recommends from health insurance line item. All those in favor adopting the article signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Number Eight. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of $20,000 for additional, for funding additional security camera equipment for town hall or take any other action relative thereto? The emergency, the quotes for the project came in well above the expected amount previously appropriated due to requests for higher definition equipment. Finance Committee recommends approval, money to be taken from health insurance line item. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Number Nine. Will the town vote to take from the dog fund the sum of $30,000 to purchase a van for the police department for the animal control officer's use or take any other action relative thereto? The emergency, the animal control officer is in need of a new vehicle. Finance Committee recommends approval from the health insurance line item. All those in favor of adopting the article signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Number Ten. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds a sum of $8,000 to pay for a new pump, venturi system, irrigation bubble system, and outdated electrical junction block, outlets, and wiring necessary for the pump house located at Hartz IV Park Park or take any other action relative thereto? Emergency is work needs to begin as soon as possible in preparation for summer. Finance Committee recommends from health insurance line item. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Eleven. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $20,000 to start restoration or renovations of the Science Center building located at Hartz IV Park, including the replacement of the roof, exterior walls, and interior walls, or take any other action relative thereto? Emergency work needs to begin as soon as possible in preparation for summer. The Finance Committee recommends from health insurance line item. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Number Twelve. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available, transfer from available funds a sum of $2,500 to replenish sand at Hartz IV Park or take any other action relative thereto? Again, work needs to be done in preparation of summer. Finance Committee recommends from health insurance line item. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Thirteen. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of $1,000 to purchase a new 18-by-30 canopy shelter to be used at Hartz IV Park during the summer season or take any other action relative thereto? The emergency, the canopy is needed for upcoming summer season. Finance Committee recommends from health insurance line item. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Fourteen has also been withdrawn as per the Department of Revenue. I would now... entertain a motion to dissolve the Special Town Meeting. Do I have a second? Motion and a second to dissolve the Special Town Meeting. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. A quorum being present, I will now call the Annual Town Meeting to order. Mr. O'Laughlin.
I'd like to make a motion that the first action on each budget and each article be, will be on the Finance Committee recommendation.
Do I have a second? Motion and a second. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote.
I'd also like to make a motion to take all articles in the order in which they are printed.
Second. Do I have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote.
And I'd like to make a motion to reconvene this meeting on Wednesday night, May 4, 2016, at 7:30 PM in the same auditorium, if needed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Before we start the annual town meeting, I need to swear in my tellers if Mary Ryan, Article One, that was held on Saturday, April 9, the election. Article Two. Will the town vote to fix the salaries and compensation of all elective offices in the town in the amounts indicated in the department budgets, and make such salaries and compensation effective July 1, 2016, in accordance with the provisions of the Mass General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended, and to raise and appropriate such sums of money for the ensuing year, and that all sums be appropriated for the specific purpose designated, and that the same be expended on for such boards and commissions for the town as voted or take any other action relative thereto? Finance Committee recommends as presented. All those in favor of adopting Article Two signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Three. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds as indicated, such sums of money necessary for the ensuing year in the department budget to take any action relative thereto? I would ask you to go to Appendix A in the back of your booklet, and we'll begin. If everybody's ready, we can start. First is the Board of Selectmen, raise and appropriate. Total amount for the Board of Selectmen to raise and appropriate is $390,700. This will be the column on your furthest to the right of the page. All those in favor of adopting that amount for the, raise and appropriate for the Board of Selectmen signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Legal Services, raise and appropriate, $100,000. All those in favor of raising appropriate $100,000 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Total Building Maintenance, raise and appropriate. Your total is $128,995. Mrs. Parsons, I think you'd like to speak.
Mary Parsons, 754 Union Street. I would like to amend Article Three, Building Maintenance Department, Number 192, to read total building raise and appropriate, $78,995. The Building and Maintenance Department to be reduced from $128,995 by $50,000 to $87,995, and the Personnel Line Item to read zero dollars. This town meeting is asking voters to approve debt exclusion, and this is not the time to add personnel to that department. I would appreciate you amending this article.
Do you have a copy of the amendment, Mary? Would you bring it over, please? We have an amendment to reduce the Personnel Line Item from $50,000 to zero, which would make the total line item, total raise and appropriate, 78... Mary, I think we've got a question. The total would be $78,995. Do I have a second?
Good evening. Thank you all for coming tonight. Ed Kimball, A. McNamaly Drive, and also Chairman of the Rockland Board of Selectmen. We had put in the budget for maintenance personnel because we have many town buildings in this town that are outside the purview of the school department. Currently, the school department, they have a maintenance director, and they have four gentlemen, or four people on staff to maintain school buildings. Currently, Police Department, Fire Department, Town Hall, Library, Senior Center, Community Center, Highway Department, and the Park Department Buildings, all those buildings are maintained in-house by those departments. We have nearly a $60 million budget this year, and it's time that we start putting some people who understand construction and understand what has to happen to buildings so we can be ahead of the curve, instead of coming back to the town every time for debt exclusion, because we seem to be not taking care of our buildings until they're gone past the point of no return. So I'd ask that the town go forward with maintaining the $50,000 line item so that we can at least start a program, hire a person, so we can go through and start looking at maintaining our buildings, along with a capital improvement plan. $60 million, if you look at $50,000 out of nearly $60 million, it's not a lot of money to ensure that the town's properties, their assets, are maintained and maintained by people who understand construction. I'm from the construction background, and if you're asking the director of the library to find out what she has to do to a building, and if you're asking the Police Department, the Fire Department, what they have to do for their building, they all do great jobs at what they do, the police chief should be worried about policing. The fire chief should be worried about putting out fires. The library should be worried about making sure we have books and things like that. They shouldn't have to be tasked with worrying about how to keep their building maintained. That's why I asked the town that they go through and they put the $50,000, maintain the $50,000 that's in the budget that's presented and has been approved by the Finance Department, the Finance Committee, so that we can start taking care of our builders and have an active plan going forward. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the article or the amendment? Seeing no more discussion, we'll vote on the amendment first. All those in favor of reducing the personnel line from zero to 50,000, thereby reducing the total raise and appropriate to $78,995, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, you have voted not to adopt the amendment. We are back to the main motion. Total building raise and appropriate, $128,995. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. For the people that are standing, there are seats, there are some open seats if you'd like to find a seat to sit down. Town Reports and Raise and Appropriate, $10,000. All those in favor of adopting $10,000 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Town, Total Utilities, General Government, Raise and Appropriate. The total is $515,700. All those in favor of adopting that amount signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Traffic Control. Total Traffic Control, Raise and Appropriate, is $16,867. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Street Lighting, we're not gonna vote on 'cause it's zero. Finance Committee. Total Finance Committee, Raise and Appropriate, is $126,000. All those in favor of $126,000 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Total Town Accountant, Raise and Appropriate. The amount is $192,555. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Total Assessor, Raise and Appropriate, $168,611. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. That's a vote. Town Treasurer Raise and Appropriate, two hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Information Technologies Raise and Appropriate, one hundred fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Audit Raise and Appropriate, forty-five thousand, five hundred. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Town Collector Raise and Appropriate, a hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Town Clerk. We're going to have two votes here. The total Town Clerk budget is a hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-three. But we are tra- first vote is to transfer in from Dog Receipts Fund, one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Raise and Appropriate for the Town Clerk, a hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. Those opposed? That's a vote. Total Town Meetings, Elections Raise and Appropriate, thirty-one thousand dollars. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Register Our Voters, eight thousand dollars, raise and appropriate. All those in favor signify? All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Conservation Commission Raise and Appropriate, five hundred dollars. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Planning Board Raise and Appropriate, five thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Zoning Board Raise and Appropriate, five thousand dollars. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Police Department Budget, again, we're going to have two votes on this. Total Police Department Budget is three million, five hundred, ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. The first vote, we are going to transfer in from the Dog Fund, eight thousand, five hundred dollars. All those in favor transferring eighty-five hundred dollars signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Police Department Raise and Appropriate, three million, five hundred, eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Fire Department Raise and Appropriate, three million, one hundred, forty-nine thousand, thirty-seven dollars. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Building Department Raise and Appropriate, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Gas Inspector Raise and Appropriate, five thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Plumbing Inspector Raise and Appropriate, ten thousand, twenty-two dollars. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Waits and Measures, four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Raise and Appropriate signify with a show of hands and favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Wiring Inspector Raise and Appropriate, twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Emergency Management Raise and Appropriate, twenty thousand, one hundred dollars. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Tree Department Raise and Appropriate, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. School Department.
I'd just like to make a motion to amend the School Department Budget, number three ninety, uh, as a result of, I'd like to take out the line item, uh, Transfer In From Peg Receipts Reserve Fund. Those were articles that were taken out of, uh, the Department of Revenue from Special Town Meeting earlier, so the total, the new total should just be what's under, uh, Total Raise and Appropriate, twenty-five million, thirty thousand, three hundred and sixty-six.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of adopting the amendment signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total School Raise and Appropriate, twenty-five million, thirty thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Highway Department. Highway Department Raise and Appropriate, seven hundred and twenty, four hundred and ninety thousand. All those in favor of adopting the attic, the budget signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Snow and Ice Control Raise and Appropriate, a hundred and fifty thousand. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Waste Collection and Disposal Raise and Appropriate. Total is one million, three hundred, thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. All those in favor of ra- raise and appropriate that amount signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Water Department. We're also going to do two votes on this. The total Water Department Budget is two million, nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. The first vote is going to be to take two hundred thousand dollars from Water Unreserved Fund Balance. All those in favor of taking two hundred thousand signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Water Department Budget Raise and Appropriate Taken From Water Receipts, two million, seven hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. All those in favor of taking from Water Receipts signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Sewer Department. Total Budget is two million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars. We're asking the first vote to take forty thousand from Sewer Unreserved Fund Balance. All those in favor taking forty thousand dollars signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Sewer Department Raise and Appropriate From Sewer Receipts, two million, three hundred, thirty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Board of Health. Total Board of Health Raise and Appropriate, one hundred, twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Nurse, Visiting Nurse Raise and Appropriate, nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Council on Aging Raise and Appropriate, a hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars. All those in favor of the amount signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Youth Commission. Total Youth Commission Raise and Appropriate, eighty-one thousand dollars. All those in favor of eighty-one thousand dollars signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Veterans Services Raise and Appropriate. The sum is four hundred thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. All those in favor of that amount signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Celebrations Raise and Appropriate, three thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. All those in favor of that amount signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Library Department. Total Library.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the Library Budget, number six-ten, Salaries, Staff, to read three hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and thirteen. This would increase in the raise and appropriate money, amount to five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Do I have a second? Second. First, we're going to vote on the amendment. We have the amendment to increase line item salary staff to, to three hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars. All those in favor of that amount signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Library Raise and Appropriate, five hundred and sixty-seven doll- five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Park Department Raise and Appropriate, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars. All those in favor of that amount signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Historical Commission Raise and Appropriate. The total is four hundred dollars. All those in favor of four hundred dollars signify with a show of hands. Those opposed? That's a vote. Interest and Maturating Debt. We're also going to take two votes here. Total is three thou- three million, six hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. The first, we're going to take fun, from the Fund Balance Reserve for Bond Premiums, we're going to take a hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. All of, all in favor of that amount signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. The total Interest and Maturating Debt Raise and Appropriate is three million, five hundred thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. All those in favor of the amount signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Retirement Contributions Raise and Appropriate. The total is three million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. All those in favor of taking that amount signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. The Health Insurance. We're going to vote two line items here. The first one is the Health Insurance Act of the first line. Is, the amount is six million, seventeen dol- seventeen thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. All those in favor of that amount signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Health Insurance Retiree. And OPED, O-P-E-B stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits Transfer to Trust Fund. The amount is one million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, uh, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. It's, and I also have to read that it's a transfer, the Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund from Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-two B, Section twenty. All those in favor of that amount signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Medicare Expense Raise and Appropriate is three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Liability Insurance Raise and Appropriate is eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. All those in favor of eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars signif- rage- ah! I almost made it. All those in favor of that signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. We have completed the budget. I have an, I have a motion to reconsider Article three, the entire budget. I have a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? You have voted not to, not to hear it. Article number four. After I have a little sip of water. You've got to turn the pages anyways. We're back to page fifteen from the front. Article number four. Will the town vote to authorize or reauthorize revolving funds for fiscal two thousand and seventeen pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half, as amended for the following purposes? You have a list there. The Finance Committee recommends as presented. All those in favor of adopting Article number four signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article number five is withdrawn. Article number six. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate to take from available funds the sum of one hundred and forty thousand dollars to purchase a backhoe loader for the Highway Department to replace a nineteen ninety-five backhoe loader or take any other action relative thereto? The Capital Plan Approve, Committee approved this. The Finance Committee recommends from the Undesignated Fund Balance. All those in favor of adopting the article signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article number seven. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate to take from available funds the sum of thirty thousand dollars to repair and paint the L-seventy loader for the Highway Department or take any other action relative thereto? Finance Committee recommends from Undesignated Fund Balance. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article number nine. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate to take from available funds the sum of seventy-six thousand dollars to purchase and equip two police cruisers or take any other action relative thereto? Finance Committee recommends from un- I'm sorry, I missed eight. All right. Let's start over. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate to take from available funds the sum of forty thousand dollars to purchase an F-three-fifty pickup with plow for the Tree Department to replace the nineteen ninety-eight Chevy pickup or take any other action relative thereto? Finance Committee recommends from Undesignated Fund Balance. All those in favor of adopting the article signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article number nine. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate to take from available funds the sum of seventy-six thousand dollars to purchase and equip two police cruisers or take any other action relative thereto? Finance Committee recommends approval from Undesignated Fund Balance. All those in favor of adopting the article signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article number ten. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of twenty thousand dollars to make the fourth payment on the software program installed in the two thousand and twelve, in two thousand and twelve of the computer dispatch records at the police station or take any other action relative thereto? The purpose or the reason the CAD system needed to be replaced, and this is the fourth of five installment payments. The Finance Committee recommends approval from the Undesignated Fund Balance. All those in favor of adopting the article signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Will the town raise, town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of sixteen thousand to replace the existing defibrillators used in the police cruisers or take any other action relative thereto? The purpose, the existing defibrillators are more than ten years old and they need an up, they are in need of upgrade or replacement. Finance Committee recommends from Undesignated Fund Balance. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article number twelve. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate to take from available funds the sum of twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars to replace the camera recording and security system at the police station or take any other action relative thereto? The purpose, our existing in-house camera and recording system has numerous maintenance issues and can no longer provide the required recording of data. Finance Committee recommends from Undesignated Fund Balance. All those in favor adopting the article signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article number thirteen has been withdrawn. Article number fourteen. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate to take from available funds the sum of fourteen thousand dollars to purchase one police motorcycle, which sum includes the trading in of one existing motorcycle currently in use or take any other action relative thereto? The purpose, the existing motorcycles are five years old and still have a reasonable trade in value. The Finance Committee recommends approval from Undesignated Fund Balance. All those in favor of adopting the article signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article number fifteen. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of six thousand dollars for the purchasing and setup of a community emergency alerting system or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends taking the amount from Undesignated Fund Balance. All those in favor of adopting the article signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article sixteen. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate to take from available funds the sum of forty-nine thousand, six hundred, forty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents for a sixth payment of ten for the lease purchase of the two thousand and eleven fifteen-hundred gallon per minute pumper and said lease to be completed in two thousand and twenty-one or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends approval from Undesignated Fund Balance. All those in favor of adopting the article signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? Opposed? That's a vote. Number seventeen. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate to take from available funds the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the refurbishment of the nineteen ninety-nine ladder truck or take any other action relative thereto? The Capital Plan Committee approved this. The Finance Committee recommends taking the money from Undesignated Fund Balance. All those in favor of adopting the article signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article eighteen. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of eighty thousand dollars for an architectural study for the purposes of building a new fire station or renovating the existing fire station or take any other action relative thereto? This has also been approved by the Capital Plan Committee. The Finance Committee recommends approval from Undesignated Fund Balance. All those in favor of adopting the article signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article number nineteen is withdrawn. Article number twenty. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate to take from available funds the sum of forty-five thousand dollars to replace the two thousand and five Ford Crown Victoria administrative vehicle for use by the Deputy Chief or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends approval from the Undesignated Fund Balance. All those in favor of adopting Article twenty signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That is a vote. Article twenty-one. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate to take from available funds the sum of nineteen thousand for the town's five percent match to a Department of Homeland Security's Assistant[1759.76] for the town's five percent match to a Department of Homeland Security's Assistant to Firefighters Grant for the purch- for the purchase and training of personnel on air packs or take any other action relative thereto? Finance Committee recommends approval from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article twenty-one signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number twenty-two. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate a take from available funds to sum of fifty-two thousand dollars to cover a gap in vacation coverage due to a contractual change of vacation time accrued for members of the Rockland Fire Department or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends approval from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting the article signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number twenty-three. Will the town vote to authorize the Sewer Commissioners to take from the Sewer Department unreserved fund balance account the sum of one hundred thousand dollars for the required tank maintenance at the wastewater treatment plant or take any other action relative thereto? Some of the existing tanks are over forty years old and in need of repairs. This is part of our ongoing facility tank maintenance program. This is, has been approved by the Capital Plan Committee. And the Finance Committee recommends approval from the Sewer Fund Balance. All those in favor of adopting Article twenty-three signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number twenty-four. Will the town vote to authorize the Sewer Commissioners to take from the Sewer Department unreserved fund balance account the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to be expended by the Sewer Commission as part of the town's ongoing program to identify and remove sources of inflow and infiltration as required under the terms of NPDES permit issued to the town by the United States EPA and the Massachusetts DEP or take any other action relative thereto? The town is mandated by the EPA Administrative Order to have an ongoing inflow and infiltration program. This has also been approved by the Capital Plan Committee. Finance Committee recommends from the Sewer Fund Balance. All those in favor of adopting the article signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number twenty-five. Will the town vote pursuant to the provisions of General Law's Chapter fifty-nine, Section thirty-eight H, to authorize the town to enter into payment in lieu of tax pilot agreement with solar PV installation, the leasing operator of the solar photovoltaic energy generating facility located at the Beach Street landfill? Upon such terms and conditions as shown on the Beach Street Solar Array Pilot Agreement, copies of which been made available or take any other action relative thereto? The article information, the developer and operator of the solar PV installation at the Beach Street landfill will be required to pay property taxes for the assets which are installed in the site. The Massachusetts Department of Revenue allows towns to enter into payment in lieu of taxes agreement with it and enable the town and the solar developer to establish a fixed pilot that meets the town tax assessor's valuation for the term of the agreement. This pilot would provide the town with a known annual income stream and would reduce tax uncertainty for developer or the slash operator. The warrant article is needed to authorize the town administrator in consultation with the Board of Assessors to negotiate and into, and enter into agreement. The Finance Committee has, defers this to the Board of Selectmen. Or the town administrator. Mr. Kimball.
Good evening again. Ed Kimball, A Magnolae Drive, Chairman, Board of Selectmen. The reason for this article was, at the time that we went forward with our solar array on the town's landfill, the DOR's rules were a little bit different on how you taxed equipment. So we had entered into the agreement for the solar array based on the fact that we don't have to pay any taxes on it. The DOR has since changed their standing. So any future solar arrays would have to be either taxed or you have a pilot which is payment in lieu of taxes. So what this article does, it corrects the language to allow us to still keep our agreement and still meet the requirements of the DOR. Nothing changes financially. What it allows the town to do is still benefit with the solar array to produce the electricity, which you've seen in the budget that was approved tonight, which helps offset, and it's now one large line item, which is a major contributor to the fact that we have free cash, which allows us to continue on with a lot of these articles that are funded tonight. So we ask that you pass Article twenty-five. Thank you.
Do you have a motion, Mr. Kimball?
Motion to pass is written. Thank you.
Do I have a second? Do I have any other discussion on this? Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of adopting Article twenty-five as printed signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number twenty-six. Will the town vote to amend Article Two, four fifteen dash two, definitions of word uses of the Rockland General Code zoning bylaws as follows? By adding the phrase of the first paragraph in Article Two, four fifty, after the word requires and before the words the following as follows, are as otherwise set forth by definition in the individual sections of the zoning bylaws, by deleting the word sign in the underlying definition of the word sign its entirety. The Land Use Council explanation, the proposed article which is related to the next article, B, is intended to clarify that there are other definitions set forth in the zoning bylaw in the individual sections of the zoning bylaw and deleting the existing definition of the word sign, which is being reinserted in the signed definition section of the zoning bylaw, which is Section four fifteen forty-four. Finance Committee refers to the Planning Board, Mr. Henderson.
Thomas Henderson, one oh two Island Street, Chairman of the Planning Board. If I could, Mr. Moderator, before we go through the zoning articles, I just wanted to go through the public hearing. Many of you have been here in the past. We had to read the public hearing notes each time. I'm gonna do it once in order to expedite the meeting tonight. So in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter forty A, Section five, the Rockland Planning Board held a advertised public hearing to review the articles related to zoning changes submitted for the annual town meeting mark for the town of Rockland. The public hearing was held on April twentieth, twenty sixteen, at seven-thirty PM in the upper hearing room of the Rockland Town Hall. The board reviewed and unanimously recommended the following zoning articles as submitted. Article twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-two, fifty, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, and seventy-nine. In addition, the board reviewed and unanimously recommended the following articles as submitted and amended, Articles thirty-one and seventy-five. The board will just reaffirm the recommendation to each article, but we won't have to read it. On Article twenty-six, the Planning Board unanimously recommends.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Are you a registered voter?
I'm not.
You're not, no, I'm not allowing you to speak. Any other discussion? All those in favor of adopting Article twenty-six as written signify with a show of hands? I need a, I'm sorry, I need a two-thirds, so I'd like to try for unanimous. All those in favor of adopting this article signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article twenty-seven. Will the town vote to amend Article Six, four fifteen dash forty-four A, general of the Rockland General Code zoning bylaws by adding the following paragraph above the existing definition of a principal signs and that nonsubstantive changes with the numbering of this bylaw shall be permitted in order that it is in compliance with the numbering format of the code of Rockland. Sign, any device visible from a public place that displays either commercial or non-commercial messages by means of graphic presentation of alphabetic or pictorial symbols or representation, a name, identification, description, display, illustration, or any other virtual visual display which is affixed to and painted on or represented directly upon a building structure or parcel of land which directs attention to an object, product, place, activity, person, institution, organization, or business or take any other action relative thereto? The Land Use Council explanation, this is an article reinserting the definition of sign into the appropriate section of the zoning bylaw. Definition of sign is updated to reflect what I understand to be the Building Commission's recommended definition of the word sign. This should not be acted on if Article twenty-six A, the previous article failed. You did vote that, so this article can go forward. Mr. Henderson.
Planning Board unanimously recommends.
Do I have any discussion? All those in, and I need a two-thirds, I'd like to get unanimous. All those in favor of adopting this article signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article twenty-eight. Will the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws? Amends Article Six, four fifteen dash forty-D permit required of the Rockland General Code zoning bylaws by deleting the following sentence, and that nonsubstantive changes with the numbering of this bylaw shall be permitted in order that it is in compliance with the numbering format of the code of Rockland. The permit number shall be clearly visible on the sign or take any other action relative thereto? This is the article that deletes a sentence in the zoning bylaw that requires all signs to have their permit numbers clearly visible on the signs. Mr. Henderson.
Planning, the Planning Board unanimously recommends.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of adopting Article number twenty-eight signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's unanimous vote. Article twenty-nine. I'm not gonna read the whole thing. I'm gonna read the two, the beginning. Will the town vote to delete Article ten, Section four fifteen, seven-nine A of the Rockland General Code zoning bylaw in its entirety and replace it with the following paragraph? In the Land Use Council explanation, this is the article, deletes the environmental performance standards of the zoning bylaw and replaces them with a more simplistic set of standards to be evaluated when considered, considering multifamily commercial industrial use. And I'll let Mr. Henderson explain it.
The Planning Board unanimously recommended this. The current performance standard that we have is very difficult to measure. A lot of the things we put in, we didn't realize, it was a few years ago that it made it very difficult for the building inspector to actually go out and enforce. So we researched it and narrowed down a little bit more of a streamlined process and a more enforceable process to make sure we protect the buttis. That is all.
Do I have a motion? A motion and a second to approve, and also this needs a two-thirds. I'd like a unanimous. All those in favor of adopting Article twenty-nine as printed signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Unanimous. Article number thirty. Will the town vote to amend the town of Rockland zoning map as shown on a plan on file with the town clerk by moving the following parcels of land shown on the Rockland Assessors Map as lots zero zero three A, zero zero four, zero zero five on Rockland Assessor Map number seven, lots zero one five, zero one six on the Rockland Assessors Map number eight, and lots number zero zero one ninety-two A on the Rockland Assessors Map number fourteen from the I-two Industrial Park Zoning District and inserting them in the H-one Industrial Park Hotel District or take any other action relative thereto? The Land Use Council explanation, this is an article, seeks to amend the zoning map to add additional parcels into the H-one Industrial Park Hotel District. This would conceptually expand the business opportunities for the uses allowed in that district. Finance Committee defers to the Planning Board.
Planning Board unanimously recommends this. Just to clarify for everybody, this is on the south side of the east-west parkway and allows for potential development opportunities. The difference between an H-one and an I-two is the hotel in registered marijuana dispensaries. But please understand with registered marijuana dispensaries, they have to be five hundred feet from a residential district. That is state law. The big opportunity here is to look at the potential with the development of the Southfield Project of seeing the potential for hotels at the end of the east-west parkway. That is all.
A motion to approve and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of adopting Article number thirty as printed signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article number thirty-one. Will the town vote to amend Article Six, Section four fifteen dash forty-five B of the Rockland General Code zoning bylaw by adding the following and the nonsubstantive changes with the numbering of this bylaw? And shall be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of Rockland? E, additional regulations. Seven, exempt signs. Digital display electronic message boards are allowed for municipal buildings with a permit issued by the Building Department. The Land Use Council, this is an article, seeks to amend the provisions of the zoning bylaw to allow digital display message boards for the town's municipal buildings by a special permit. The formatting will need to be adjusted. Finance Committee defers to the Planning Board's recommendation.
The Planning Board recommends this unanimously with, as amended. It was, the amended article was passed out. The amended article is in italic at the end of number seven, which is, the quotation message will be static and will not be operational between the hours eleven PM and six AM. And also in the Land Council's explanation, it will not require a special permit. It will only be a permit. And that was unanimously voted by the Planning Board as amended.
Mr. Kimball.
Good evening again. Tonight, the Board of Selectmen met prior to town meeting, and they also had taken a look at Article thirty-one. And they had submitted an amendment voted on by the board that would remove the words under item E-dash-seven. It will not be in operation between the hours of eleven PM to six AM. With the thought process being that some people work the night shift and we still want to have the ability to have the town's message put out there as people are going to work or coming home from work and in the event of emergency uses, taxes due, things like that. The board will be static. It's an area that's really non-offensive. And we thought that it would be better utilized to have the board on, or have the ability to have the board on twenty-four seven. I had already submitted an amendment just before meeting to the town moderator stating so. Taken on the vote by the Board of Selectmen. So we ask you to make a, looking for a motion for that amendment.
Motion and a second.
Thank you.
First, I have a motion on the. Mr. Manzella.
Well, Manzella, Chairman of the Zoning Board. The reason why we're saying keep the sign off between eleven and six is because ninety percent of your schools are in residential zones and you're gonna have this sign going all night long. Police, fire, and hotel signs are exempt from the twenty-four hour, so they can go twenty-four hours a day. So there's no reason to run these signs all night. All the businesses have to shut theirs off. The town should lead by example, shut the sign off at eleven. Thanks.
Any further discussion? Seeing, first, we're gonna vote on the amendment. The amendment was to remove the words, "It will not be in operation between the hours of eleven PM and six AM." All those in favor of adopting the amendment signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. We'll try it one more time. All those in favor of adopting the amendment signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? Chair is in doubt. My tellers will come forward. Alright, all those in favor of adopting the amendment, which would say, "Remove the words and will not be in operation between the hours of eleven PM and six AM," signify with a show of hands and keep them raised until you've been counted. Mr. McDermott. Sixteen. Ms. Ryan. Thirty-two. Ms. Crowley. Forty. All those not in favor of amending the article, please raise your hands and keep them up until. Ms. Ryan. Eighty-eight. Ms. Crowley. Seventy. Mr. McDermott. Seventy-two. Obviously, we aren't close. You have voted not to adopt the amendment. Let Mr. Henderson go. Are we now going to adopt, take a vote on the article as written?
As amended, Mr. Manzella. We read it as amended. I read, already read the amendment. Yeah. Make sure you read Article 31 as amended. It was amended by, it was, the paper was amended by the planning board that was in the package, not printed in the warrant itself, the ones that were the separate piece of paper, Article 31 as amended.
This is the, this is what was done at the planning board on April 20th. A motion was made, seconded, and unanimously voted to amend the town meeting to read as static-only message and for the sign to be off between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. It was made, the motion was made, seconded, and voted to recommend the amended article at the town meeting. So we're going to, what this is saying is the board, the message board will not be on between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. That's what you voted just before this. All those in favor of adopting Article 31 as amended, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 32. Will the town vote to amend Article 11 of the Rockland general code zoning bylaws by adding the following section? I'm sorry, we're going to have to go back to that. I'm getting, I'm getting carried away with myself. Article 31, I need to bring it back on the floor because I did not say it was unanimous. Motion to reconsider?
Second.
All those in favor of reconsidering, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. All those in favor of Article 31, as I read previously, as amended, the sign is off between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. I need the unanimous vote if I can get it. All those in favor, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Unanimous.
Can't wait till we get to some of these other articles.
All right, Article 32. Will the town vote to amend Article 11 of the Rockland general code zoning bylaws by adding the following section? And it's printed before you. The land use council explanation is, this is the article seeks to reinsert into the zoning bylaw the right to grant a use variance provided an applicant and was able to meet the very rigorous standards of a variance. This may be helpful to allow the redevelopment of properties and neighborhoods where there is a mixture of pre-existing usage. And Finance Committee recommends, defer us to the planning board.
Planning board unanimously recommended Article 32 as written. To some points on the use variance is, we did have this in the past, and this has come in front of this body to look at. And what we've done is, we've retasked this and come up with something that really protects the abutters and developers in the town. And it's, what happens is, is you see us in front of the town meeting making various zoning changes, because what we see is changes in development that we have to work with as we go on in time. And this will allow some flexibility to the zoning board. When it comes to zoning variances, these are not very easily attainable process. It takes a significant amount of time. You have to make sure you're not more detrimental to the abutters. When we had zoning variances in this town many years back, we only had two that were granted. One of them was Cody's Liquors, which is down, it used to be next to the police station. And then also 250 VFW Drive, which was the atrium building right on the corner of Pleasant Street. And that was built and left vacant, and the variance was granted so they could put condos or apartments in there, and a decrepit building that was just falling down. So we reviewed this, we come up with a bylaw that gives flexibility but is very restrictive, and you have to make sure you maintain the abutters and protect them also. That is all.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion, Mr. Henderson?
I have a motion to accept.
Do I have a second? Mr. Khan.
Donald Khan, 64 Union Street. We had this, the planning board took it out for good reason. This allows in any zoning chain, any zoning district, a change which otherwise wouldn't be granted. A use variance allows for what might be spot zoning. The way we do this currently, if somebody wants to change in a particular zoning district, they have to come to this party, town meeting, and do it. I think we should keep it that way. I think we should pass, not pass this article.
Mr. Baker.
Robert Baker, 79 South Douglas Street. I was on the planning board with Donald Khan when this article came out. We understood that there was only a couple of instances where we used this. But in tonight's town meeting, we're changing zones. By you people voting, if you want. If this goes through, and not saying they will or they won't, but they, the zoning board, the five members of the zoning board, could put a beauty salon next to you, your house. They could put a hairdresser's. They could put a Tupperware. Someone could come in and say, I want to change, put Tupperware business in my garage. And you'd have UPS trucks, FedEx trucks coming and going all day long, dropping the stuff off. We took this out for that purpose. If someone wants to put a business in this town that bad, they should come before us as a voting party, not just five members of one board to put this, to change these things. We've done it before. We just changed the zone. We're going to change a few more zones if we, if we think it's appropriate. That's what this, why we took this out, is so that you people got a say in what went in your neighborhood, not just five members of the board. Thank you.
Mr. Henderson.
If I could clarify some things, I think there were some misconceptions of that, this bylaw. And it's important to know that this, granting this bylaw doesn't say a business can come into your backyard and open up tomorrow. It means that it could go through a process, a process where you would get notified as an abutter, and be able to be heard and be able to challenge it if you felt it was more detrimental to your, as an abutter. Now, there's so many things, you know, through this that the applicant or developer would have to go through to achieve, whereas an abutter would have the most protection. It's not changing zones, it's not spot zoning. It's looking at various buildings throughout this community. Unfortunately, this community was built before zoning came in in 1957. And some of these buildings exist in various neighborhoods that unfortunately have got run down or not be able to be changed. And some of them are just not going to convert into a single-family home. And if they look at doing a zoning change, a zoning change is permanent forever, whereas a use variance goes with the applicant and goes with that business. I think this is a positive step forward. I think this protects the residents and makes sure that, that we can progress with our development of our community. Thank you.
Mr. Manzella, before that, Mr. Galvin, the town land use attorney is here, and I'm going to recognize him, and then I will recognize you, Mr. Manzella.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Robert Galvin. I'm the land use council for the Town of Rockland. I drafted this zoning article in response to what I foresaw as a, each year we had a number of what we called housekeeping articles, where we were adjusting zoning to try to redevelop properties. This is not an uncommon thing to have use variances. Many of the communities that surround Rockland have this tool. I concur with Mr. Henderson's statement that this doesn't mean you can have a business located next door to you. You could only have that if you're able to convince four or five members of the zoning board of appeals that you, you could establish that there was something unique about the soil shape or the topography of lot that was somehow connected to that zoning relief that would justify a change that was very significant from the existing zoning. It's not a majority vote, it's a supermajority vote. They're very difficult to sustain where they're granted, and they're impossible to overturn, I would say, if they're denied. So this is not a circumstance where you're going to be seeing people coming in willy-nilly and changing zoning, because that's not what it is. It's a tool that will allow a finite change, something that makes sense to everybody. And it would probably take everybody in agreement to make that happen, because an abutter that was dissatisfied would likely have a very good chance of overturning any grant of a variance. So I'm saying that all to your fronts, you understand how difficult this test is. There's only half a dozen reported cases where variances could be sustained where challenged. So it's not a circumstance you're going to be seeing frequently. They're to be granted in rare and unusual cases.
Mr. Manzella.
Bob Manzella, Chairman of the zoning board. Like Mr. Henderson, number two, said, we've only granted two use variances in over 24 years, and these were for buildings that were already there. Two years ago, we tried to rezone parts of West Water Street, because there's a couple abandoned buildings. Both buildings are still abandoned, because we can't do anything with them. We had a couple of businesses that want to go in, but we can't, our hand is tied. We have abandoned building on Park Street, trying to get those back on the tax rolls. They're a fire hazard. They're a police hazard because of people going in there. We need to do something. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I can't hear you. Thank you very much for coming down front. Please state your name and address, please.
April Hammond, 110 Emerson Street, Rockland, Massachusetts.
Just come around and talk into the microphone, please.
April Hammond, 110 Emerson Street, Rockland, Massachusetts.
Go ahead, you can...
My question is, since the zoning board of land use decided to pass this motion to do this rezoning, obviously, they had, at the last minute, some areas in my, like they did Park Street. I request this panel to say the other areas of intention, that they are thinking of bringing in this zoning area, rezoning area.
Mr. Henderson or Mr. Galvin?
I could say it's not for any specific area. It doesn't designate an area in the community. It just, it's actually for the entire community, for any piece of property.
On Water Street, by any chance?
Which, I mean, which piece?
West Water.
There's a variety of lots.
Lake?
We don't know. I will, I will tell you, one of the things that brought us to light was the end of Park Street. Park Street, end of Park Street, people are familiar with. There are several decrepit buildings at the end of that, and a developer came in to look at that, trying to rebuild there. Unfortunately, they could put a two-family house, which is insufferable with the demolition that's needed to be done. So they'd rather just walk away from the property. They also looked at the 40B project. But they also looked at the potential of a zoning variance would also, would help this. I cannot...
40B project?
40B is the affordable housing.
Affordable housing project?
Yeah, yes, you'd have to talk in here. Just to clarify, there's no specific project ready for this, there's no reason it's looking forward to the future of what the potential of the town could possibly benefit from this while protecting the citizens. There's, there's no motive for this, it's just a matter of looking to the future.
I, I think the question that, Mr. Manzella, if you could come up and clarify, you mentioned something on West Water Street, and I think because she lives on Emerson Street and the, being parallel to West Water, I think that maybe is why she's asking this question. Am I correct?
Oh, yes.
Okay, Mr. Manzella.
The land behind my home, that, from behind my home, is all woods going out to the Water Street.
Mr. Manzella.
And golf course, that's my, end of my block also, which I was wondering had you changed on that, because you had set it in to stay as the golf course or open spaces for the next 100 years, including that piece behind me, and then you had a quick change. So I'm wondering, does this involve my neighborhood?
Mr. Manzella, can you further?
No, what this involves, is a building, I'll just take one, one building as an example, the old Acme Building or the old SD Building, okay? Somebody wants to go in there and do and say a business. Now, business has been in there, but if it doesn't meet, that's a residential zone. As a zoning board, we can't allow it if it's not listed in a residential zone. So these buildings stay empty until God knows whatever happens. The building on Park Street, we had a developer, he wanted to put in some apartments. The only thing we can allow is two. He says it's not financially possible. He can do a 40B and do probably 40 or 50 apartments.
So you're, you're talking about only established areas that are in light?
Correct. I mean, like Mr. Henderson said, the Cotea Liquor Store on Marcus Street, that moves across the street between the old police station and the old gas station. That lot was a residential lot. I mean, between a police station and a, and a gas station, you're not going to put a house there.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
I hope that answered your question, ma'am. Is there any other discussion?
I have one.
Gentlemen over here to the left, my left.
You discuss about...
Sure, sure, would you just state your name and address, please?
Henry Sullivan, 206 East Water Street.
Thank you.
We talk about families, family zone. I've complained numerous times to the building inspector about a company that has come in and bought up homes on East Water Street, Paragon Landscaping. They get away with it. They're buying up properties on East Water Street and just putting their people in it. And they're, it's owned to be families, family homes, not for a business to be storing their people in that work for them. They bought two homes that I know of, and there could be a third. And it's being allowed. What are you going to do about that?
I think you'd have to, Mr. Henderson...
I brought it up here.
That's, that's not, I would consider that out of order where it's not on the, on the article. Zoning variances do not authorize illegal uses, and if there's an illegal use, it needs to be reported to the building inspector. And I understand your, your concerns, but...
I give up.
And unfortunately, the zoning variance is about...
For time.
Okay, sir.
Sir, it's something you'll have to, you'll have to do, and if, and with the, at the time, I can't do it here tonight, it's not part of this zoning article.
You were bringing up zoning, I brought it up.
And if you have, and it sounds like you have a legal, a complaint, so you should go back to the building inspector's office.
I give up.
Mr. Baker.
I signed Robert Baker's...
Sir, sir, please.
Robert Baker, 79 South Douglas Street. This would be to the Chairman of the zoning board. If this article passes, could I put in an application, after it's approved by the Attorney General, to put four barbershop shop stools in my cellar if I met all the criteria and started running a business there? It's a yes or no?
Mr. Galvin?
I attend all the zoning board meetings, and the answer would be no, because you haven't established any of the elements for a variance. So the zoning board of appeals would not be granting you a variance.
If I could meet all the criteria?
It would be very difficult, under what you've just explained, how I could ever envision you qualifying for a variance.
No, I asked, if I could meet all the criteria, could I put in a barbershop in my cellar?
Even if you meet all the criteria, the board would have the discretion to deny the variance?
They could deny it.
Absolutely.
They could approve it, too. They could approve it, though, too.
They could approve it, and if you were dissatisfied with their decision, you could appeal that decision.
I understand.
Or a neighbor.
Well, the neighbors could appeal it, too.
Correct.
This lady over here to my left, please state your name and address.
Margaret Schnabel, 90 Union Street, Rockland. From Mr. Manzella, point of information, if you please. If somebody came in front of you for the West Water Street property, I'd like to know what would happen into...what they would have to do to prove that the land was clean enough from the chemicals that have been dumped in that piece of property before they could use it.
Sorry, but that's not part of the question.
Well, it's for the...what if they had a variance, Kevin? If they had a variance, what would they be able to do with that variance? Because in...what worries me about these is when they have large pieces of property that aren't being used, that there are frequently reasons that they're not being used, and, you know, there's...I have a problem with that particular piece of property, and I'd like to know how a variance works with that, where we're talking about variances. I do think it's a pertinent question.
If I could say to answer that question very easily, that just having a variance doesn't authorize all the other boards to permit the project. They still have to go through the regular permitting process, getting a building permit, conservation, planning, foresight, plan and design, all these things will be covered. This is not just granted because you voted tonight. This gives the option of being able to do it.
Sir over here?
John Pumpfree, 325 Howard Street, member of the Finance Committee. I live directly across from the end of Park Street. The abandoned building that's there has been there since we moved in. A year ago, we had an explosion in the parking lot of that building from an abandoned boat that somebody decided to light on fire. It is a danger to my neighborhood. If I can give the zoning board some, you know, a little bit of rope here to do what they need to do to approve some sort of an improvement in the property, I would appreciate it, and if you were living across the street from this building, you'd want it fixed, too, so.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brian Hughes, 31 Will upon Drive. This is a tool that most municipalities I deal with, I'm an attorney, have, has. This does not give anyone anything. It gives the zoning board the ability to take a property that is not used to its fullest extent and to allow it to be used to its fullest extent. If you want the town to get built up and improved, improve the tax base, allow changes that are beneficial to the town, you need this. You're handcuffing the zoning board by saying, no matter, you know, what benefit the change is going to be, you can't do it. You want to talk about spot zoning? Spot zoning is changing the zoning map every time you want to put a new business in a place. You don't change the map to fit the business. You give the board the ability to grant a variance for a use, which, once that use is abandoned or changed, it's gone. I will wholeheartedly support this. I think it's crazy that we don't have this. This town needs to be developed and improved, and it has nothing to do with any particular parcel or any particular project going forward. This is a tool that almost every town I have ever dealt with has had. And variances are almost impossible to get. Even if you qualify, you're probably not going to get it, and if you get it, it's going to be overturned by the court. Happens all the time. It's nearly impossible to get a variance, but sometimes you need one, and I support the argument. Thank you.
Motion to move the question. Do I have a second? All those in favor of moving the question signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Now, we're going to vote on Article number 32. We need a two-thirds or a unanimous. All those in favor of adopting Article 32 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article number 33, we're back-to-money articles. Will the town vote to transfer the amount of $5,000 from the historical park account to the tramp house account or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends taking from the money from the historical park article. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 34 has been withdrawn. Article 35, I'm not going to read the whole article, I know there will be discussion. It's, will the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to request a special act of the General Court in the form set forth below, amending the town charter to allow the Board of Selectmen to appoint a Highway Superintendent, provided, however, that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes to form only to the bill unless the Board of Selectmen approve amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court, and provided further that the Board of Selectmen is hereby authorized to approve amendments will shall be within the general public objectives of this article. An act relative to the charter of the town of Rockland. And it basically, there's an explanation of Highway Superintendent from being elected to appointed. And it bottom line, the person holding the elected office of Highway Superintendent on the effective date of this act shall be considered to have been elected to the office of Highway Superintendent and shall remain in office until the expiration of the term to which he or she was elected, unless he or she sooner resigns or is removed or recalled on April 13th, 2019, whichever may occur first. And the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee defers to the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Kimball?
Good evening again tonight. The Board of Selectmen supports this article for a majority of reasons. Everybody has seen the current events, everyone watched Fox 25 recently, everybody's seen what happened. We had a road employee, unfortunately. Being on the Board of Selectmen, we had a lot of phone calls, we had a lot of complaints, and we don't have any ability to do anything about it. Currently, the Highway Superintendent is elected, and that becomes a popularity contest, just as the Board of Selectmen is. The only difference being is, being on the Board of Selectmen and on other boards throughout the town that you may get elected for, the majority of them are unpaid. The Highway Superintendent's a paid position. We pay a lot of money for that position, and we want to be able to have standards, and we want to make sure that the Highway Super gets some classes, some education, things like that, with knowledge of roads and running a highway to buy them. And this is no ill will against the former person, whether that was Mr. Corby, who's no longer the Highway Superintendent, or our new Highway Superintendent, Mr. Dave Taylor. It's purely just by position. Again, because it's popularity contest, Mr. Taylor won out this time, last time he was a close second. For the town, we spend, as I said earlier, our budget is nearly $60 million. Tonight, we have a second Phase Two of a roads project on. We want to make sure that people in this position actually understand roads, know what to do with them, and again, I'm not inferring by any means that Mr. Taylor or Mr. Corby didn't know that. What I'm trying to say is that because the town is being run more like a business, we got to start considering it and running it more like a business. Few years back, there were positions that were put before this body that failed. If you go back and you look, currently, we have a town collector, we have a town treasurer, we have a town clerk, and highway. Those are elected positions that are paid throughout the town. A recent study from MMI, the Municipal Association, there's currently about 11 communities, okay, that responded out of 351 cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth, Rockland being one of them that still hasn't elected highway. We're going by the old way. It's time that we get watered, it's time that we start appointing people to these positions so that we can make sure they have the right credentials for our town. We spend a lot of money, we spend a lot of money on our roads, and we want to make sure we have the right people taking care of them. And again, it's no reflection of the person who's here now, and it's more about the position itself. And we ask that you support this. Again, the current elected Highway Superintendent is here until the duration of his term. Not to say that he can't apply for it, not to say that he won't be appointed for it, we don't know that. What we're trying to do is set up for the future of Rockland so that we can go through and run our government more like a business, because with $60 million a year and growing every year, you good people in this audience who vote these things, you owe that. You want to make sure that you have someone there who's going to be responsive. You want to make sure that you have someone there who's going to discipline employees. You want to make sure that Rockland's held in a good light. We've all worked very hard in this room, supporting articles and whatnot, over the past five, seven years, okay, between schools, seniors, roads, and to see that washed away with a rogue employee in a matter of 30 seconds on the news, it was very disheartening for the Board of Selectmen. It's very disheartening for a lot of people. When I go to places, that's all I hear, what are you going to do about it? What can you do? And again, the Board of Selectmen presented this article because that's all we can do. We ask that you support it, we ask for a motion.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
A motion and a second. Mrs. Parsons?
Mary Parsons, 754 Union Street. It's an elected position for a reason. You never want to give up your right to vote someone in or out of office, and that's what you saw this spring. The Board, current Board of Selectmen will not always be the current Board of Selectmen, and when you leave it up to them to appoint, it's a lot harder to get rid of a person that has a contract, but when you elect someone, you have to say, and if you don't like the job they're doing, there's a recall that can be done. So, please, keep your right to vote. Do not give away that right. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Move the last one.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion, we'll vote on Article 35 as printed. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of adopting Article 35 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, you have voted to pass the article over.
Motion to reconsider?
I have a motion to reconsider. Do I have a second?
Yes.
I have a second. All those in favor of reconsidering the article signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, you voted not to reconsider the article. Article number 36, will the town vote to transfer $22,000 from the overlay surplus to the assessors' revaluation account for the purposes of continuing this cyclical reinspection program for the revaluation as mandated by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue or take any other action relative thereto? Finance Committee recommends approval for overlay surplus. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 37, will the town vote to transfer $20,000 from the overlay surplus to the assessors' revaluation account for the purposes of completing the fiscal year 2017 interim year revaluation as mandated by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends for overlay surplus. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 38. Article 38, will the town vote to reduce the residency requirement on the property tax exemption for disabled veterans who were not domiciled in Massachusetts six months before entering the service from five years to one year before application in accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 59, Section 5, Class Clause 22F, which shall apply to all veteran exemptions, Class 22, 22A, and 22F through 22F, and will be effective beginning in fiscal year 2017 or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee defers to the Board of Assessors. Is somebody here from the Board of Assessors? I see no one here from the Board of Assessors.
Mr. Moderator?
Is...
Deb Krupcheck is here from the Assessors' Office.
From the Assessors' Office? Please come to a microphone, please.
I'm the assessor appraiser for the town of Rockland. The Board of Assessors recommends this article.
I have a motion to recommend it. Do I have a second?
I want to...
She is...she is...I have allowed her to speak because she does...she has an office in the town. She still...we just still...she recommends, but we do not have a motion on the floor. We have a motion to...do we have a second? To approve. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of adopting Article number 38 as printed signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number 39. Will the town vote to accept Sections 3 to 7 inclusive of Chapter 44B of the General Laws otherwise known as the Massachusetts Community Preservation Act by approving a surcharge on real property for the purposes permitted by said act, including the acquisition, creation, and preservation of open space, the acquisition, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of historic resources, the acquisition, creation, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of land for recreational use, the acquisition, creation, preservation, and support of the community housing, and the rehabilitation and restoration of such open space and community housing that is required or created as provided under said act, and that amount of such surcharge on real property shall be...shall be 1.5% of the annual real estate tax levy against real property commencing in fiscal year 2018, and that the town hereby accepts the following exemptions from such surcharge permitted under Section 3E of said act. Property owned and occupied as a domicile by any person who qualifies for low-income housing or low or moderate income senior housing in the town as defined in Section 2 of said act. $100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel of residential real property, $100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel of Class 3 commercial property and Class 4 industrial property is defined in Section 2A of Chapter 59 or take any other action relative thereto. This is going to be a majority vote. The Finance Committee defers to the Open Space Committee, Park Department, and Historical Committee, and I also want to remind you that part of this, even though you vote this tonight, if you voted to approve this tonight, this will be seen on the November election, secret Chair recognizes Mr. Yul.
Good evening, Derek Yul, 19, Butter Nut Lane, a member of the Open Space Committee. We've put forth this article in conjunction with the Parks Department and the Rockland Historical Commission. For those of you that aren't familiar with what the Community Preservation Act is, it's a program that was signed into law almost 16 years ago by Governor Salucci. It was set up to fund some of the perennial underfunded programs in towns, a way to bring funds into these programs, whether it's open spaces, historical preservation, community housing initiatives, that otherwise wouldn't get nothing in a budget. It is of ways, shapes, and forms, it is taxed. We have the privilege of exempting certain groups from this tax. Low, moderate-income senior citizens, low-income housing, low-income families can all file abatements for this. The money that can be raised from this program is ridiculous, to be honest. You can...you're looking at, in the town of Rockland alone, with the exemptions that we've written into this bill, you're looking at roughly $330,000 in locally raised funds. The state has created a fund. Basically, they give out matching money for this. It's free money coming back from the state based on us enrolling in this program. The last few years, it's been in the area of 30% returns. It's another $110,000 coming back to Rockland. This money can only be used for the three specific areas that were mentioned. Open spaces and recreation, historical preservation, or community housing. Open spaces and recreation, historical preservation or community housing. It cannot be put into a slush fund. It cannot be put into an area to pay for overtime or a different project. A committee gets appointed. Five members have to be from specific boards in town. The Finance Committee, I believe, has one planning board, has one conservation, has a seat. And they basically take projects that are brought to them and they vote. Should we try to push this into town meeting? Should we write an article about it or whatnot? It basically gives the town a means to fund the unfunded. You look around at some of the neighboring towns that are involved in CPA. Rockland's one of only, I think, four now because Abington just voted to accept it Saturday, which was pretty huge because they have been trying to do it for a while. We're one of four towns now on the South Shore that hasn't taken advantage of this. You see Hanover, Forge Pond Park, all the Greenway programs. Those are all CPA funds. People always ask why, you know, what's it going to cost me? With the three exemptions, the average taxpayer in this town, it's about 46 bucks to 48 bucks a year. That's a year. For 440,000 back in usable funds. And these things, these projects, can't just be any projects. We can't rebuild Mary Jo's barn down the street because it was a historical building. They have to pass back through town meeting once again. The people still have a say. They have the final say in how these funds are used. But it's something that we should be capitalizing on. We've passed quite a number of things, and again, you're going to be asked for more tax increases. It's the nature of the beast, guys. This is Rockland. I love this town. I grew up in this town. Had the option to move and didn't. But this is a program that we see in the boards that I've mentioned before that co-sponsored this. We see this as a very positive thing for the town. Passing this tonight and voting yes on this doesn't automatically institute it into law. It still has to go on the presidential election ballot in November and then let the whole town take a vote, not just the 300 or so that are here tonight. We're asking for support from anybody that has questions or anything. Come forward, make your statement, put it out there for everybody to hear it. This specific act can really, really pick up things in this town. Property values rise up when you're near recreation. If you're on a trail, you're near a park, we see those property values come up. That's a fact of life, you know? Historic preservation, once something's gone, it's gone. You know, if we don't preserve it now, kids down the road aren't going to see it. And the community housing, I mean, that's a pretty huge necessity as this town is pretty well under the percentage that is required to have. The three most underfunded things in small-town politics and small-town budgets. This program was devised to make this stuff attainable, to give a sustainable fund that goes on. We can opt out of it in five years. If nobody likes it, you can opt out of it. It's never happened. Out of the 160-plus communities that are in this state that are already enrolled in this program, they've never had somebody back out of it. They've had people finish a lot of projects and actually bring their tax rate down. You can go as high as 3%. We figured 1.5% was suitable for Rockland. By "we," I mean, you know, some activists that got together from these different committees and put this forth. We've met with several members of the Community Preservation Coalition, which is an organization here in the state that goes out and educates people on this program.
Mr. Yul, let's try and finish up.
Okay. Sorry.
No, no. Trying to keep you to the time.
It is pretty boring stuff when you get down to it. The basis of it, guys, it's a fantastic program that's been running. If you look around, a lot of the other towns around here, they've acted on this, and they're reaping the rewards now. I think that it's definitely time that Rockland gets on this bus and starts taking back some of this cash that comes from the Registry of Deeds. So we're already, if you're buying property in Rockland, you're already paying into it. That's where the fund... It's funded from. So we'd like to get your support tonight and get this thing on the November ballot so everybody can have a shot at voting on it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Valenzola.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jared Valenzola, 40, Pace and Ave. Question for you, Mr. Yul. Okay, so it's 1.5% of the annual real estate tax levy. Who, should this pass, would be in charge of raising the levy? You answered one of my questions previously, that the levy limit is 3%. But who would have the jurisdiction of raising the levy, should this pass?
As far as raising the tax, it would have to come back again. If we wanted to raise it from 1.5% to 3%, it would have to come back before town meeting the same way it's doing now. And then it would have to go back to a ballot initiative again. So it's never something, this can't be controlled by one person. The governing body of this is actually the Department of Revenue. And as we've seen with the situation that happened in a neighboring town, if you do not adhere to the specific guidelines of what this money is used for, you... The hammer comes down, quite frankly. And we've seen that happen just recently, so.
Okay. I guess the only comment I'd make, I guess, I am concerned again relative to the Department of Revenue having control. I certainly have an issue with tacking on another tax to our property taxes. And I will say that if it's been in effect for sixteen years and only 160 out of 351 cities and towns in the Commonwealth have adopted it, perhaps we need to stay with the majority of communities in the Commonwealth that have not adopted it. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
You're welcome. Any more discussion? Mr. Valenzola, Senior.
Lou Valenzola, 40, Pace and Ave. I don't know how many of you have read this bill, the whole bill? You've got to be careful. This happens to be just one of the first three tax increases proposed for tonight. The outright, it's 1.5% on any value over $100,000. It can go up to 3%, subject to 2.5% law. What's to start the state from increasing that amount? If you read about the CPA, you saw a number of administrative costs that can be paid from the CPA fund, see Section 6. Lots of Section 5F states that a city or town may appropriate money any year from the CPA fund to an affordable housing trust fund. Does this mean that some of the affordable housing projects proposed for Rockland could be funded from the CPA fund? I think most will agree that Rockland has done more than a fair share of affordable housing at this point. Let's not give our politicians another reason to take our money and use it for their pet projects. Again, there's two more tax increases on the warrant tonight. If these are passed, that would make 13 tax increases over the past 10 years. And the money that comes from the state from this, that's not free money. There's never any free money. Got to come from somewhere. That money comes from the Registry of Deeds, like you said. So they tag on. So the cost of doing business in the state just keeps on getting higher and higher, the cost of doing business in the town. So we should get our priorities straight. If we want to pass these debt exclusions, how much we want to burden taxpayers who have stepped up and passed these tax increases over the past 10 years. So I hope you will reject this. Let's not give them another way to tax us. And thank you and have a good night.
Mr. Khan.
Donald Khan, Chairman of the Open Space Committee. We're asking you tonight to take some time to look at this proposition and to vote it in a secret ballot in November. Some people may have doubt. We think it's a great project. We think it's... If you don't adopt it, it's just wasting money that it's paid anyway and will come here from the state. So vote it for tonight. Vote it so we can have the ballot in November and study it in the meantime. I think the majority of you will find it beneficial for this town.
Mrs. Parsons.
Mary Parsons, 754 Union Street. I watched the presentation that the CPA gave at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, and there are three things that this can do. And it's a strict rule. You can't just spend the money. Open space takes in your parks and recreation. And what was said at that meeting is they will do pay for the grading, and this is of a park. It just won't pay for artificial turf. But this is a way to maintain your parks in this town without asking for more debt exclusions. So I would ask you to pass this because, Lord knows, that November election, man, everybody's coming out to vote. So they've got enough to back it up. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Yul.
Just enclose you guys, not going to take any more of your time. As Mary said, these things are pretty rock solid. Nothing can be done with this money unless you vote on it. It comes to town meeting. Every project comes to town meeting. So pet projects, things like that are non-existent. It comes to town meeting. You have the final say. Taxes cannot increase. That 1.5% levy, $48 a year on average. That cannot increase unless you guys voted in. And that's what it comes down to, is having your voices heard. Mary's nailed it right on the head. She hit the nail. We might not need so many debt exclusions, overrides, and pulling money out of different programs if we have this program. Thank you.
Motion to move the question. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of moving the question signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, voted to move the question. We already had a motion to adopt it. I believe we had a motion to approve. I could be wrong. Motion to approve, and I have a second. All those in favor of adopting Article 39 as printed, this is a majority vote, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number 40. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $8,000 to fund the first year of a five-year lease purchase agreement for a 2016-15 passenger multifunction school activity bus or take any other action relative thereto? Finance Committee recommends from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 40 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 41. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $100,000 to fund the replacement of upgrading of computers and any technology-related expenses or take any other action relative thereto? The Capital Plan Committee approved this for the school department. Finance Committee recommends $50,000 from undesignated fund balance and $50,000 from raise and appropriate. All those in favor of Article number 41 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 42. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $15,000 to fund the renovations and repairs of student bathrooms at the Memorial Park, Esten, and Jefferson Elementary Schools or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends funds from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of Article 42 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 43 was withdrawn. Article 44. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $20,000 to fund the purchase of updated equipment and supplies for the Rockland daycare or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends approval from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 44 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 45. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $54,000 to fund the second year of a five-year combined lease purchase agreement for two 2015 Ford Transit Special Education vans and the first year of a five-year combined lease purchase for four 2016 Ford Transit Special Education vans or take any other action relative thereto? Finance Committee recommends approval for overlay surplus. All those in favor of adopting Article 45 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number 46. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $60,000... 60... 66... Is this 60 or 66,000? I've got two... It's printed two ways. Mr. Chalky, 66,000? Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $66,000 to fund the receiving of Memorial Park, Jefferson, and Esten Elementary School rules or take any other action relative thereto? The Capital Plan Committee approved this. The Finance Committee recommends funds from overlay surplus. All those in favor of adopting Article 46 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 47 was withdrawn. Article 48. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $75,000 to fund the purchase, installation, programming, and enabling of indoor security cameras at the high school or take any other action relative thereto? The Capital Plan Committee approved this. Finance Committee recommends funds to be taken from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 48 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number 49. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $18,000 to fund the purchase and installation of a security during the high school gymnasium area or take any other action relative thereto? Finance Committee recommends funds from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 49 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number 50. To see if the town will amend the zoning and land use bylaws of the Naval Air Station South Weymouth and zoning district map as follows, as printed. By rezoning the parcels of land entirely in the Town of Rockland shown on Exhibit A attached here too, which is in the back of your booklet, from residential district to open space Rockland district. And two, by adopting the Rockland zoning district map change created a Rockland Development Overlay District which is located entirely in the Town of Rockland, which shall contain the following sub-districts. A, Rockland Discovery Sub-District. B, Rockland Town Center District. I am not going to read the next number of pages because you won't remember what I said on the first page. There is appendix at the end of this, Appendix B and C at the back of the warrant to look at. And I am going... The Finance Committee has referred this to the Planning Board. This is going to be a two-thirds vote, and I refer it to Mr. Henderson.
The Planning Board unanimously recommends this article as printed.
I'm sure we're going to have discussion. Mr... Mrs. Parsons.
After 20 years, it is very nice to say we should approve this zoning measure. Working with the Board of Selectmen and the Rockland Open Space Committee, and both parties agree and approve of this, I would urge you to do a unanimous vote, and let's get on with it.
Mr. Khan.
Donald Khan from the Open Space Committee. The Open Space Committee, the Board of Selectmen, and the developer have signed a memorandum of agreement on the open space that because they're dipping into open space for the development, they're compensating with some open space in the Town of Rockland. If you are familiar with the last house on the right at the Union Street Gate, that property, which was going to be developed, is now becoming open space and a piece of space in the Town of Abington where Thompson Park exists, open for all. All that is going to be part of the open space compensating for what open space in the golf course is being taken. And we're very happy with the results of this thing, so please vote for the article.
Mr. Kimball.
On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, I'm proud to say that many people who had past dealings with this space, as Mary said earlier, went back over 20 years. We had a developer who got bought out. That new person who had bought them out was purely interested in just taking what they could for money out of the project. Unfortunately, the project was sold to another developer by the name of Elstar. Elstar Israeli stepped up their game. They came to the table. They looked at what the town wanted to do. They looked at what open space wanted to do, and they've actually listened. This is the first time in a long time that we have a plan that is... Was put together by all parties. And at the same time, I'd like to recognize Mohammed Atani from Stonebridge. He was the developer opposed putting a 40... He was the developer opposed putting a 40B at the end of Union Street. And through the work with Elstar and Mohammed coming to the table, that project is now, provided that you folks vote in the affirmative tonight, that project won't no longer be there. That project will be open space. There's 24-plus acres of land there. There will not be a 40B housing development. That'll be open space into perpetuity. And again, I want to thank everybody who came forward, came to the meetings, who were involved. We always didn't agree, but we were able to put everything aside for the good of Rockland. And this is a project that we can all move forward with and know that it's going to be a benefit to Rockland. Not only do we have open space maintained, but we also have the ability to have commercial on the base that'll provide us with tax revenue in the future, which may, at some point in the future, once it's developed, will bring us enough tax revenue and new growth so we may never have to come back before the town for these debt exclusions. I know there's two more up next. I'm going to ask you to support those at that time. But what I'm asking you right now is please make a motion to support this, as Mary said unanimously. It's for the best for the town, and it's something that I think we're all going to be proud of in the future. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second to adopt this article. All those in favor of adopting Article number 50 signify with a show of hands. I'd like to have a unanimous. All those opposed, that's a unanimous vote. Thank you very much. Before we go any further, a lot of people are still here. I'd like to have... I'd like to mention somebody who's been with us for a number of years, who was going to retire. And I think without some of his insight and his service, we wouldn't have the building we are in now. And I'd like to have Superintendent John Retschler stand up. This is his last town meeting in Rockland. Probably his last town meeting ever. He's done a great job for us. We have a beautiful auditorium. It's air-conditioned if we needed it. Thank you very much, John. Article 51. Will the town vote to rescind the unused $49 million... $49,547,449 portion of the debt authorization for the middle school, high school building project originally approved at the annual town meeting, November 3, 2009, Article number eight, or take any other action relative thereto? The explanation, the middle height... The middle school, high school construction project was originally required to be approved to borrow in its entirety of $86,201,449 per the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The town only borrowed $36,654,000 for its remaining portion of the MSBA-approved loans, leaving an unused balance of $49,547,449. Rescinding this portion places the town in a better financial position for future bonding and bond rating. The finance committee recommends...
Thank you.
Approval. This requires a two-thirds vote. I'd like to have a unanimous... And I... First action's going to come on the finance committee recommendation of approval, so we're all set there. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of adopting Article 51 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article number 52. Will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $6,500,000 to continue construction and perform additional road repair, reconstruction, and maintenance on the public ways as listed below, including roadway drainage systems, curbing signs, pavement marking, shoulder improvements, and related structures? Said some to be expended under the control of the Highway Surveyor and that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow said sum under Mass. General Law Chapter 44 or any enabling authority, provided that the amount required for the payment of principal and interest on $6,500,000 bonds or no shall be exempt from the limitations on taxes imposed by Mass. General Law Chapter 59, Section 21, Proposition 2 1/2 contingent on and pursuant to the ballot vote at a subsequent special town meeting or take any other action relative thereto? This is going to require a two-thirds vote. This is a debt exclusion article. It's going to require a two-thirds vote for borrowing. And I believe the town... Special Town Election will be held on June 11. Is that the date?
That'll be the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. They have a meeting tomorrow night.
Okay. But there will be one sometime in June. There'll be a special election in June. Mr... Recommends the... Finance Committee recommends debt issuance. Capital Plan Committee approved this. Mr. Taylor, Highway Superintendent.
Good evening. David Taylor, 329 Summer Street. Lifelong resident in this town. We're at a very important time in the crossroads of this town. Our infrastructure is calling for this road project to keep moving forward. These are roads that have been neglected for 20 or 30 years, as far back as I could as an elementary school. I'm asking you guys to get this onto the ballot and let the voters as a town either pass or move this backwards. If we do not vote this through, we will be moving our infrastructure backwards. We do not have the money in the Highway Department to keep doing this multiple amount of roads. We would have, with our budget right now, we could probably do one road, maybe one and a half roads a year, unless this goes through. So I'm asking you guys... I'm asking you as a town to move forward and not backwards and support this article so we can get it onto the election. Thank you.
Do I have a motion, Mr. Taylor? Motion to... Motion? I have a... Wait a minute! Motion? Do I have a motion? Motion to approve? Do I have a second? If you can come down front, I'd appreciate it.
Rosemary Gueyami, 55, Linwood Terrace. I've been here in this town 30 years. I'm on Linwood Terrace. Not once since I've lived here has that street been fixed. We were told our street was going to be one of the ones on this ballot to be fixed. Linwood Terrace is not on there.
Mr. Taylor or Mr. Kimball? I know, Mr. Taylor, I think this was put in before you became Highway Superintendent.
Good evening again. This Phase 2 project was developed with the former Highway Superintendent, the Board of Selectmen, with the Water Commissioner, and with the Sewer Commissioner. The list of the roads were based on a rating system, and that's how we come up with the Phase 2 over the next three years. There is some Chapter 90 money out there, and I do know Senator Keenan's in the audience that he was able to get Rockland a little bit more money out of the budget this time around, so we may be able to go through an addressment with Terrace with that money. But this is critical for the town to continue moving forward, as Mr. Taylor said. Myself am not a lifelong resident, nearly for some people. I've been here 47 years. And I think it's very important that we look at all the roads in Rockland. This is Phase 2. Phase 1 was done. There's a little bit of remaining work due to weather and due to some utilities, and the funding has been set aside to do that work. Phase 2, if you are good enough to pass it tonight, we'll go on a ballot. And again, that'll be taken up tomorrow night at tomorrow's Board of Selectmen's meeting. The intent with Phase 2 is to continue the roadwork in town. We need to have good roads. People talk about taxes. They talk about debt exclusions. Everybody knows that your home is your most important investment. It's difficult to sell a home without a good school. It's difficult to sell a home without fields and things like that for people to play on. It's difficult if the seniors don't have a place to go. It's difficult if you can't drive down your road or walk down your road for that matter. These are important things the town needs to do. The town unfortunately has overlooked its obligations in the past, and things were let go because we didn't have the funding. We're asking you people tonight to put it on the ballot, vote positive tonight to continue Phase 2. You heard me earlier? Talk about a highway guy. I lost that one. I hope we don't lose this one tonight. We do need to continue the roads. We pledge to work, Mr. Taylor, to make sure the roads get done in this town. Thank you.
All right. Before I go on to address this lady's question, I have call on the Town Administrator.
Linwood was on the Phase 1 that was done. Now, not all of the money and all of the roads from Phase 1 have been completed. When Phase and if Phase 2 passes, we still have to do the bond work. So the roads that are on this second list or Phase 2 wouldn't even begin until maybe late August or September by the time we go through the process. So Linwood will be done, I think, along with... You're working on Myrtle, Exchange, Summit, Christine. There are a number of roads that are currently... Were Phase 1, that are still in the process of being completed. And Linwood was on that first phase when we passed it before. So I understand your impatience, but it should get done, Dave, I can't promise, before Phase 2.
Yeah, actually, just to go on that, if you can... If you look at Article 52, there are a number of roads that are still on there that got carried over from Phase 1, one of them being Christine Ave., Delprid Ave. Those roads will be done with the money we have left over from Phase 1. We have approximately $671,000. We're about to start Myrtle Street and Exchange Street this week, you know, depending on the weather. We have our contractors in line for pulverizing and paving the roads starting in June. We've reached out to the residents in those areas. There's a meeting for those specific streets on Thursday night here in the high school and only those specific streets. Because every street's going to be handled a little differently because not all of them are full reclamation at this point. So we're going to handle them all. We'll reach out to those residents beforehand, tell them we have a meeting coming up, you know, whether it be, you know, with the... We're looking at the ball field, Azilia and Magnolia, we can reach out to those before we start at those. Whether you went to Millbrook, we reach out to Millbrook and have a meeting. So everybody would know what's going on as far as that. If you look at that, as I touched base on Article 52, you have Christine and you have Delprid Ave. Those will get done on this next one. Like we said, we will be doing Myrtle, Exchange, Summit, Christine, and Delprid Ave. And after that, with the money that we have here, Linwood Terrace and Shaw Ave were both to be done on that from the first phase. Those will be done after the Myrtle and...
Ma'am, does that answer your question? This gentleman here?
Mark Sealy, 51, Linwood Terrace. I just wanted to speak to that, too, is that in 2013, we voted for this, and it still hasn't happened. But every year, we go down to the Highway Department and said, "Please, when are you going to do something?" And nothing ever happened. They said, "Well, maybe next year." I just want to make sure something gets done. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Yes, ma'am.
April Hammond, 11 Emerson Street, Rockland. The first Phase 1 that you're talking about, is that the 11 roads that you proposed to be paved and done in 2012?
There was 68 roads on that were done, and there were eight car... Eight car rentals.
11 roads that were done in the summer of 2012?
In the summer of 2012.
In the summer of 2012.
I know there was 68 roads on that were done last year.
As respect to the work that was done, those first 11 roads were supposed to be chosen. I believe there was a meeting and discussion about the first 11 roads that the contract was going to, to this person. And it had been chosen because the infrastructure was supposed to have been in good place. Everybody had sewer, but that wasn't the case on Emerson Street. Emerson Street, everybody didn't have sewer. There's been five water main breaks since they paved the road in 2012. One on either side of my home flooding my home, causing electrical problems, then it burning down, and now again. Last summer after the house burnt, I complained again to the Water Department about excess water in my yard, and they found another water main break on the other side of my property. Now, the infrastructure in this town for the water mains and such, and these roads that are chosen to be repaired go far deeper than potholes and roads that haven't been taken care of over the last 20 years. Some roads in this town hadn't been touched 20, 30 years. I'd hate to see any of you go through the pain and suffering that I am as a disabled woman on a limb and...
Ma'am, we've got to stick to the article...
With a road that is unstable, where you cannot see the damage that's happening to our homes beneath. There are over five other people on the block that are being affected by this. Two on either side of me are town tax collector. She's on the block also and is being affected by it. Many other people. But apparently, my home and where I am has not been addressed. I need the water to be...
Ma'am, ma'am, that's not part... That's not... Ma'am, that's not part of this article tonight.
Well, I believe it is part of this article.
Ma'am...
The roads need to be repaired, the water mains in this town and the sewer...
Ma'am...
Do need to be resolved before we pour money and pay. The infrastructure needs to be sound, and that's what I'm raising...
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Valenzola.
New Valenzola, Foddy Pacey Ave. We knew about this for a while. Why wasn't this on the town election last month? Can anybody answer that? We're going to have to pay extra for a special election next month? We could have had this on the ballot last month and would have voted on it. We save money. This is another... This is just another example where money is no object. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Yes, sir.
Henry Sullivan, 206 East Waters Street. One thing I hear very little about is excise taxes. Excise taxes are provided by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for one purpose: road repair. Why am I paying more taxes to do road repair when excise taxes are being put in the general fund? They're not meant by Chapter 690. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts says that these taxes are to be used for one thing and one thing only: road repair. Why am I paying more taxes to do something that I just paid $2,000 in the last two years in excise taxes that should be going towards that? Either that or stop collecting the excise tax, and I'll vote for anything you want.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Chalky?
And I can appreciate it. I pay excise taxes in my own town, and the amount of the excise tax, for accounting purposes, does end up in the general fund. But I can tell you, we already expend well in excess of the amount of excise tax on the roads now. So if you were, for example, pick a number, $50,000 paid by the town, and I know it's more than that, by the town and its entire... more than that, by the town in its entirety, and said, well, we'll do that for the roads and that's all we'll do for the roads. We already spend $100,000 beyond that. So we spend in excess of the excise tax on the roads. In addition, we spend the Chapter 90 money. I get this question frequently when people come into town hall and say, where's my excise tax money and how are you using it for the roads? We spend more than we take in on excise tax for the roads. Now, over the years, as far as a plan goes, I think we have underfunded the amount of money that the town of Rockland needs to maintain its roads. And we've made a commitment through the Board of Selectmen to try and increase that amount over the next few years. It's been at $100,000. This year's budget shows $200,000, I think it was $110,000. This year's budget shows an additional $200,000 into that paving account, road maintenance account. And the intention, if the economy continues to go well and everything works, is to try and increase that each year for the next three years up to a $500,000 maintenance fund so that you do have good roads and you don't have to wait 23 years to get your roads done. In the meantime, the Phase One, Phase Two, and there may be a phase later on unless we can take care of the roads with this amount of money, is something the town needed to do to catch up. Because for years, you weren't spending enough money in this town on your roads and road maintenance. And this is the price you pay. Thank you.
Motion to move the question. Do I have a second? All those in favor of moving the question signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
This is going to require a two-thirds. I'd like a unanimous, but we'll do whatever we have to do. All those in favor of adopting Article 52 as printed signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's unanimous. Article 53, will the town vote to raise an appropriate, take from available funds a sum amount of $3,900,000 to pay cost of designing and constructing an athletic complex consisting of turf playing field with 800-seat grandstand, press box and a surrounding eight-lane track, including removal of the old track in Reed Street and building two new softball fields and multi-use field at the Reed Street complex. Said some to be expended under the control of the Park Commission and that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow said sum under Mass General Law Chapter 44 or take any other act, I'm sorry, or any other enabling authority, provided that the amount required for the payment of principal and interest on $3,900,000 bonds are noted shall be exempt from the limitations or taxes imposed by Mass General Law Chapter 59, Section 21, Proposition 2 and 1/2 contingent on and pursuant to the ballot vote of a special town election or take any other action relative thereto. This is a debt exclusion article. It requires a two-thirds vote plus a, as it said, a ballot vote and a special town election. The chair recognizes Mr. Murphy.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Steve Murphy, 23, Millbrook Drive, lifelong resident of Rockland and as stated, a member of the Board of Park Commissions. What I'd like to do real quickly, we've been trying to get into the public as much as we can in the past couple of weeks for the sole purpose of educating people as to exactly what we're trying to accomplish. I think in the day and age of social media and so forth, some of the things that you see are just unfathomable where people come up with these ideas or concepts or whatever. So we would like to just give a real quick presentation. And the reason I want to do this, I think it will cover a lot of the questions that may come up. I do ask, in the essence of time, if you maybe let me get through this and then we'll field some questions at the end. So the first, the first thing that's come to light in these presentations that we've done, there's two main misconceptions. The first thing I want to state specifically is this is a debt exclusion. It goes on the ranks for 15 years. It slowly gets lower over the course of 15 years. When it's done, it's gone. It's not a permanent tax. Secondly, the biggest, the second biggest misconception that we've seen is people think that if you vote on this tonight, we'll put a shovel in the ground tomorrow. It is, it is just not the case. What you're voting on tonight, and you've heard it from another couple of articles here, what you're voting on tonight is to allow us to move this project to a town vote in the meantime, which will be in June. In the meantime, we can get out, we can educate more people, tell you exactly what we're planning on doing, and on, and June 11th, I believe is the date, you can give your final say. So if you're on the fence, if you're not quite sure, all I ask is that you give us that opportunity to get to town vote, let the town people speak, and we'll go from there. So I'm going to make this real quick. Those of you that know the area, the picture to your left is your high school and youth soccer field. The picture that you're seeing there with the smiley face in the sand is exactly where your high school goalies will be standing. It's an absolute disgrace. And one thing I really want to preface is, I wholeheartedly back the Park Department. They have done a tremendous job. This has just come down to overuse. We have a tremendous amount of teams that use these fields. We have hours and hours more that people are looking to use these fields and we just can't accommodate them. So first section, the second section, some of you, first section, if you consider the Oval over on, on lower, on Reed Street. Most people probably know it by the Oval or by Centennial Park. That's the one with the walking track. The second section is, excuse me, the second section is the Oval, which is down below the stadium. That's where we play out lacrosse, youth football, many other sports use that. The third, probably most of you would know this better than, than, than the other two, there's your walking track. For those of you that walk, the common conception is you need to walk with your head down so you don't snap an ankle. So it's really becoming a safety issue. That track is in excess of 30 years old. It's had some work done to it, but it's honestly, it's just outgrown its useful life. It's time to go. Next, please. I'm going to go through these real quick, in the essence of time. The first one is an absolute disgrace in my eyes as a lifelong resident. Rockland High School and student athletes have not hosted a home track and field meet since 2009. That is absolutely disgraceful for our kids and whatnot. The next step in that whole process is we now have athletic directors and school principals from other towns telling them, telling us that they're not going to become willing, they're not going to be willing to come here to play lacrosse and play soccer based on the conditions of our fields. Absolute disgrace to the town. In the last five years, there's been 13 new boys and girls lacrosse teams added. Gives you an idea. That was not here five, six, seven, eight years ago. Lacrosse is a great sport. Lacrosse beats the fields up pretty well. It's just, it's, it's evolution. It's what the kids are playing and so forth. They're currently 45 hours per week at a field time and can't accommodate it. Worst thing we can do as a park department is tell someone we got nothing for you. But honestly, we have nothing for you. We have nowhere to put you. We've tried to put some mandates on, we've switched lots of park around and so forth, but we're absolutely maxed out. Two main fields been utilized must be shut down by the Park Department from June to August. Absolute disgrace, but there's nothing we can do about it. If the fields are going to recover, we have to allow that to happen. Little redundant, the walking track at Bicentennial Park has rapidly deteriorated. Here's an I open of 42. Of all the surrounding towns, only Carver and Hull do not currently have turf in use or in development, while many towns actually have multiple fields. Since I actually put this slide together, Carver and Hull are both working on it. So if you, this was in an immediate radius of Rockland encompassing all of the South Shore. So if we want to be the one town encompassing, you know, 30 or 40 towns around us that don't have this, then voting down tonight. We're not looking to keep up, you know, any luxury here. We're just looking to evolve with sports and get the facilities to where they need to be. This is, let me give you just a real quick view here, just to get your bearings here. On this particular slide, north of this field, north of the complex, would be the stadium. Directly south of it, and I don't know if it's actually south, I'm just saying for, for purposes here. Directly south is Memorial Park. Directly to the east is the rail trail and directly to the west is Colonel Duffy Drive. So that kind of gives you an idea of where we are looking to put this. Next slide, please. This, as you, as you currently know it as a walking track, becomes two softball fields and a bonus field we're calling, because we were able to fit an extra field into the middle here. So not only are we completely redoing the Memorial Park side of things over at the Bicentennial, we're going to completely redo that and repurpose that as well. Could you actually just go back? Okay. So one of the things that we're really working hard on, and we've had some meetings, and I want to proactively address this with everybody, we're, we're, we have two issues that we're running into in regards to the veterans. We're trying to work as closely as we can to them and I want to proactively point out what those issues are. If you can possibly see where the starting lane is for the, in the top right corner of the track, that is currently where you may know as the groves. So we will be encroaching on the, on the groves. What I will tell you is that some, some of the trees in that area were dedicated to veterans years ago. I can also tell you that dozens of those trees are either completely dead or soon to be dead. So what we're looking to do is work with the veterans groups to take that area that's rapidly deteriorating, replant all that growth on the other side of the groves, possibly put a nice pavilion in with all the decorated veterans plaques and so forth, so people can actually understand that that's the people that gave their lives for our country and for Rockland. So that's the first kind of working with the veterans. Now, keep in mind, this is just a rendering. There's nothing we can do as far as surveying or getting into the nuts and bolts of this until we get funding approved. I bring that up because one of the things that we've discussed with the veterans and some other groups is possibly shifting the field a little to not maybe encroach as much as we are. And we're really not encroaching on that much, but it would be less encroaching. The other piece here is, some of you may know it as the old Memorial Park Little League Field, which is now a softball field. You can see that that obviously has to go. The reason I bring that up is that that and five or six other fields in town were dedicated to veterans years ago. So yes, absolutely, we are going to have to displace that field. What we're proposing to, to the veterans and other groups across the street, we would love to rededicate that field with one of the fields. In addition to that, there's, as you saw, there's two fields. We would like the veterans group to come up with another name of maybe someone that's passed away recently and dedicate that field as well. So again, this is all happening quick. It's, we're not trying to do, you know, we're not trying to be deceitful, we're just addressing these issues as they come up. So, next, please. Real quickly, I don't want to take up too much time, just give you some benefits here. Greatly expanded outdoor education facilities. Rockland High, Memorial Park School and Middle School all be utilizing this, which they currently don't really conduct any physical aid classes in the area. Significant saving on busing to external facilities. We currently spend, the town currently spends $6,000 to $8,000 a year in busing our students to away track meets, away JV soccer. They have to bus those kids down to Esten School. It's just a cost that's there every single year because we don't have the facilities to accommodate. Additional revenue generation through field rentals. This field's going to be a high demand. We're going to allow the high school first, youth second, Rockland groups third, and then it's outside agencies fourth. As a park department, that's always the protocol that we've had and we will continue that. But that fourth aspect of it will be some revenue generation, which will go into a fund for when this field needs replacing down the road, we will have a good portion of those funds already intact. John Superintendent Rexus will appreciate this. 120 new parking spaces is currently a major problem in Memorial Park School. Memorial Park School has no parking. The whole gray area, could you back up a little? The whole gray area you see down the bottom there, that is all additional parking, which obviously Memorial Park School have access to, but also any events at the stadium will have access to. One of our cost-saving measures, the utilization of current stadium lavatories and also the current stadium concession stand. That will be, obviously they need some upgrades, but as a cost-saving measure, we're including that into the mix. Simple access for the Nyman Senior Center. We spoke at the senior center today in front of 80 or 85 seniors. Quick access right down the rail trail, probably less than a quarter mile and they're on the walking track for themselves. This is a real cool idea. Auxiliary lighting of the track allows for expanded resident use. What that means is you want to leave here at 8:30 at night and you want to go walking and it's dark, excuse me, you walk up to a light stanchion and you hit a timer. And what happens is if you can envision each light stanchion having 20 or so lights, what that timer does is it activates one light per each stanchion. So then you can walk the track. It's not lit up as day, but it's more than suitable lighting for anyone that wants to use the track up to a certain time of night. Certain ordinance is restricted, but up until a certain time of night, you'd be able to use it. The track's open to all residents. It's open to all residents, even if schoolchildren are there because we have a segregation of the, of the lanes. So it's really a community project. It really is. Minimal environmental impact, that actually entails the current track. Yale Associates, who has done a big study for us, has actually come out and said, by replacing that track and that concrete over, the tire over at Bicentennial and replacing it with grass, you actually have a better environmental impact than the area is now. And I actually should have mentioned that. The Bicentennial Park with the two softball fields as well as the multi-use field, that is grass. That is grass and that does not have lighting. So any of you that might be in Butters or what have you in that area know full well that that, that, that will not be lit up over there. Okay? And now the, the nuts and bolts of it, as I mentioned, it's a debt exclusion, it's for 15 years. Your average home's going to pay $62 a year. And what happens is as the note gets paid, that ramps down to 40. There's certain, people in the rent-controlled properties, you're going to be, you wouldn't be affected by this, you'd be under the rent control agreement. But for, for the average homeowner, that is the, the nuts and bolts that you're looking at there. So real, real brief synopsis of it, and like I say, I'm more than happy to answer questions, but I wanted to hopefully get that through first. Maybe we answered a bunch of your questions, maybe we didn't, but anyone that wants to pop up is more than welcome. Okay? Thank you.
I need a motion. Motion to approve. Do I have a second? Is there any more discussion? Mr. Najarian.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Jeff Najarian, 22, Rafferty Street, Rockland. I am here as a veteran to voice my concern about situations that are happening here. Believe me, when veterans first found out about this situation, indeed, it was just a couple of weeks ago when we had to do some quick, ask some quick questions, do some research, and a lot of things have happened since that time. One of which was, Mr. Murphy and an associate came to our VFW last Thursday. And I had called a diversity meeting, walked through groups in town, Disabled American Vets, American Legion, the VFW, of which we had over 50 members of those different groups plus some concerned citizens to discuss the situation. We had an initial meeting and then Steve came in and he gave a very nice presentation, very similar to what he gave here. And indeed, all the veterans present were not against having more fields for Rockland because the way they keep on adding fields and teams, you need, need more fields. But the situation is, if, if a person hadn't come to us a couple of weeks ago and informed us of what was happening, we would have had no idea that this particular field is going to encroach on a couple of different areas that are town memorials to follow, follow veterans. In particular, the field, by the way, Stephen, it's seven residents and seven little league fields, not five or six. Some time ago, some years ago, the Rockland Allied Veteran Council, made up of the DAV, VFW and the American Legion, approached the selectmen and got permission to have fundraisers so it didn't cost any town's money and have plaques put on the seven little league fields at Rock, five at Spring Street, one behind Jefferson and one at Memorial. And we named those seven fields after the seven Rockland sons who were killed in Vietnam. This particular field, Charles Bartlett, has his name on a plaque behind that. It is, it used to be a little league field, it's now a softball field. And that's okay. But if you go by and you read that name and say, I remember him, and that's what it's all about. And the proposal that they've given, although I admit, as Stephen said, it's not set in stone, but the end result is it is going to not only encroach upon that little league field, it's going to destroy it. There will be no more little league baseball, softball field there. It's going to be parking for cars. And indeed, when you, when you install or initiate a memorial, that is considered at that particular time as hallowed ground. And the veterans that I represent, or if you want me to just speak for myself, are not for that. Some proposal had been given, you know, we can dedicate another field or we can do this. But the situation is, no veterans group or individual that I know of was notified that there was going to be a change in the monuments of this town. The memorial, monument committee for the... The memorial monument committee for the town of Rockland, of which I'm a member, was not notified that this was happening. Just out of respect, you'd think you'd do that. But it seems to be being thrust upon the town within a short period of time. I think people have been thinking about it for a number of years, but it only came out in March. And indeed, as I said, if an individual hadn't approached to let us know what was going on, there was just not that much information out, we wouldn't have known it. We would have come to this meeting and probably passed it without even realizing what was going to do. Let me go a little further. Those seven Rockland residents who lost their lives in Vietnam, all approximately my age, some of them a couple of years older. Every single one of them played Little League baseball on that field in its infancy. I'm not even sure if there's anybody here that was here at the time that Little League was installed in the town. Mr. Joy, Mr. Condon, my father, so many other people that started it. But they're also veterans and wouldn't allow something like this to happen. So just let me say, we're not completely against getting some fields, but I think it needs a lot more than just a little tweaking, because no matter how much you turn that field, and basically, the reason that field is turned to where it is, is because the sunlight is going to be in the goalie's eyes. I don't want to give up a memorial that's dedicated to one of our fallen soldiers for that. And I'm not here to address, you know, the amount of money it's going to cost and so forth. That's another issue, and if you have to pay it, you have to pay it. But I think it needs more tweaking, I think they need to table this, do more research. I can't see the destruction of that Little League field as being a positive thing. The other monuments that we were talking about, and we have no verifiable proof of it, but I have been told that that clump of pine trees right next to that softball field, a number of years ago, well before all of us, was dedicated to the Spanish-American War Veterans. But I have absolutely no proof of that on paperwork. But I do know that there are twenty-four trees planted nineteen forty-four to forty-six behind the stadium. And there's a stone monument with a bronze plaque on it dedicated to the twenty-four citizens from Rockland who lost their lives in World War II. And indeed, some of those trees are in bad repair, some of them, a few of them are dead, some of them have already been destroyed and taken down. But it's just a matter, and the park is very nice about it, they'll help replant. But when they put that stadium in, and believe me, it's not just a, we've heard soccer field and track has been the thing that's pushed. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a new football field and stadium. There will be no more football played up in, up a stadium. That's what we were told at the meeting. It's only going to be for baseball. So life is changing quite a bit.
Mr. Najarian, could you wrap it up?
Yes, I thank you very much. I actually, I'm through. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for listening. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Mr. Norris.
Mark Norris, two Jacob Level Lane, vice chairman, Rockland School Committee and United States Army veteran. I have two kids that will not ever get to use these fields. I hear taxes, my taxes are eighty-six hundred dollars. But this is for the future of all the other kids. And I understand, Mr. Najarian, and I agree with you, but I have full faith, knowing Mr. Murphy for over twenty years, that he and the rest of the park department will make that memorial better. I only suggest that maybe you go online and look up on YouTube called Rockland's Finest, and I'll tell you what's going on at the grove. You can ask the police department. It's drug activity, it's drinking, it's fights. And there's many, many videos posted online, actually by a high school student, that show this activity going on over there. I think if we can redo this area, clean it up, new trees, really make a fantastic memorial to those twenty-four veterans. And what about the veterans, Mr. Najarian, that are coming back from Afghanistan, Iraq, that now have kids that are going to play on those fields? Their kids are going to play on those fields. So that would be my only thing. And being part of the school committee, and I know the park department did this, we worked very well with the veterans, I think we have probably one of the most beautiful memorials to veterans that I've seen in a long, long time. And that was all with cooperation with the school committee and with the park department to make that happen. And I am very proud that we did that, but I think we could all be very proud if we had this new field and redid that memorial to the veterans. Thank you.
Joe Bellini, forty-four Norman Street. I just want to say, we could throw titles out all day long, all right? I'm an Army veteran. I'm a disabled veteran. I'm a Gold Star brother. I'm everything. But I'm a resident in this town. And as a resident in this town, I do not want to forget that monument. I do not want to forget that baseball field, and encroaching on that pine grove is forgetting it. And that's what I do not want to do. I do not want to forget that, and I don't want this town to forget that. I want to remember it. And I want my kids that grow up in this town to remember that field. Because I'm a young veteran, I'm returning from Iraq, Afghanistan, I'm that veteran. I'm coming back here to you town people, and I want you to know, I want fields, I want tracks, I want all these things in that town, but do we need to have them right there? I'm coming to you right here, right now, and I'm asking you, don't forget, just remember. Thank you.
Todd Eastman, three ninety-nine Forest Street, Rockland resident, also Army Combat Veteran. Like I said, I'm not against the fields either. I am a Rockland VFW member. And as far as those trees and those parks and those ballfields, that is a memorial. Once you put that as a memorial, that's it, in my eyes. It's like a slap in the face to that family that was dedicated to those soldiers. That you're just going to get rid of that, up and move it and put something else to it? No. That's not what we do. You've got bad trees, you replant them. You keep that hallowed ground. You keep the sacred area. That's what it's all about.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Brian Hughes, thirty-one Will upon Drive. I am not going to speak to the moving of the memorial, I don't have the credentials to do so. My father maybe, but he is not a Rockland resident. All I know is that if these fields do not get put in, new families aren't going to move in, some families are going to move out, I would likely be one of them. I can't have my kid playing at the fields where they are. I can't, if the town is not going to support what essentially is school project, a school and youth support project, you know, why am I here? Now, I'm not saying we can't do this and fit, you know, around the current memorials. It can be done, it's engineering. But we can't get the engineering done to help preserve the memories unless we get the money approved. This is not a plain article, this is a money article. So please, let's just focus on that and then work together as a community to try to preserve the history of this town. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Brenda Atkins, five King Philip Circle, Rockland. The turf you're talking about, the artificial turf with the rubber? Are you aware of the investigations and the cancer?
We had a gentleman from Gale Associates here earlier, unfortunately with the meeting going so long, he had to depart, but I asked him that specific question. That might have a ton of validity. When I was asked that question, I compared it to drinking red wine's going to kill you, eating meat's going to kill you. There's no scientific evidence of it. The only thing that I've heard on that entire thing is you would literally have to take a handful of these pellets and heat them up to a thousand degrees and ingest them for it to be any type of problem. I also asked a gentleman from Gale Associates, because that's what they do, they put these fields in, ninety percent of the fields that they put in in the past twelve months were done this way.
Well, a college, a research in a college, four goalies all have lymphoma, and they believe it's from diving after the ball on the artificial turf. So that's just something you want to be aware of when your children is playing on artificial turf. Just a thought.
My name is Scott McKinley, I live at forty-one Phillips Street. I am a veteran also. I came to this town in nineteen fifty-nine. I learned very quickly what Veterans Memorial Stadium was. It was a memorial. More importantly, ladies and gentlemen, that field and that stadium that is up there right now was built with funds donated by the veterans to allow the young people in this town to participate. They forego and foregone, they did not want any type of celebration. They put that money that was raised by this town for the benefit of the young people. Those of you who know me, since I came in nineteen fifty-nine and have been here ever since, know that I was in the kid business. I'm still in the kid business fifty years later. The kids in this town need your support. I'm ashamed that this has come down to a veterans against, I guess, the town or the proposal to do something for our young people. If that was the case, Veterans Memorial Stadium never would have been built.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Sampson, Rice Ave. I'd like to ask the gentleman over here, he has no proof of the lymphoma cancer, but this soccer coach, Amy Griffin, there's a hundred and fifty-eight soccer players nationwide right now, not a huge number, unless it's your kid. And they're talking about heart chins, lymphoma. You know, I'd like to, you know, everybody's here is talking about the kids. Well, I want to know that you're going to put your name on it, that any one of these kids get the lymphoma. I'm talking about this turf.
State of that, stay off of Mr. Murphy.
The turf. I just want to say, and who's going to take care of that one child or two? Maybe it might be none of your kids, but how about if it is? Are we going to be reassured that the turf is not the problem of it? And then the second thing I want...
Two questions. I have five children. I guarantee everyone will be on those fields as much as they can possibly be on those fields.
Okay.
Second question, again, with no scientific proof, the one thing that we can do as a Plan B here, is five years down the road, or ten years down the road, if this is proved, there is a process in place where we remove the pellets and we replace them with a cork replacement.
Now, why don't we do that in the first place?
Because it's, again, do you have scientific proof that those pellets? I'm asking you a question.
No, I don't have a scientific proof, but if you're saying if, why don't we just put the cork...
Gentlemen.
Okay, second question. The second phase of this bicentennial, the walking track that's all ruined now because we plowed the thing and it just surfaces. Are we adding, are we adding space to that? Is that growing out further? Are we filling in pot? I just want to know.
In response to that, the walking track is plowed for the benefits of the residents, so they can walk in the winter. That's first and foremost. Secondly, the footprint over there will not impede on wetlands, will not impede outside the existing tree line that's currently there. And as I mentioned earlier, in a detailed assessment from Gale Associates, that area over there does have some wetlands in it. That environmental impact will actually improve over there because of the water flow off the track not being there.
And where's it going to go? Is it going to go further off toward the...
It's going to go into the grass.
It's going to go into the wetlands, yeah, that's on my parents' side and the other side. All right. Okay.
Motion to move the question. Second.
Second.
All those in favor of moving the question signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. This is the dead exclusion article, it requires a two-thirds. I'd like to have a unanimous. We don't, we'll take a vote, we'll take a count. All those in favor of adopting Article fifty-three as written, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, we will count. All those in favor of adopting Article fifty-three as printed, signify with a show of hands Ms. Ryan? Mr. McDermott?
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine. Ms. Crowley? All those in favor of not adopting the article, please show your hands and keep them up Ms. Ryan?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. Ms. Crowley? Mr. McDermott?
Thirty-four.
Voting on the Article three hundred and twenty-six, voting in favor, two hundred and forty-one, you have voted to approve the article. Please don't everyone leave, we can finish this tonight in a short time. I have a motion to reconsider the article, do I have a second? All those in favor of reconsidering Article number fifty-three signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, you have voted not to reconsider the article. Article fifty-four is withdrawn. Article fifty-five, will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds a sum of four hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of design, construction of drainage and paving in the area of George Street, and that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen is authorized to borrow said sum under Mass General Law Chapter forty-four or any other enabling authority or take any other action relative thereto. Finance committee recommends a town meeting. Do you have a motion, Mr.? Finance committee recommends approval. Do I have a second? Second, Mrs. Parsons.
I just have a question. Isn't George Street in the roads project anyway, and with the drainage?
Mr. O'Loughlin?
We left, we voted to approve...
We left, we voted to approve it in case it doesn't pass at town election, because George Street does need to get done regardless.
So, it's redundant?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
All those, any other discussion? All those in favor of adopting Article fifty-five, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article fifty-six, will the town vote to raise it appropriate or take from- I'm sorry, I needed a two-thirds vote, I'm sorry. I needed a two-thirds vote on that previous article. So, we're going to vote again. All those in favor of adopting Article fifty-five, I'd like to get a unanimous. Signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article fifty-six, will the town vote to raise it appropriate or take from available funds a sum of one hundred and seventy-four, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars for the purpose of replacing the twenty-four-year-old stone ballast main roof, the small low roof and along the perimeter corners located on the rear addition of the public library with a fully adhered PVC roof system, including the removal of the old roof system, installation flashings, drains and increased roof installation, along with removing the rotted wood trim at the base of the cap flashing to be finished by extending the metal cap flashing to keep the same look, and that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen is authorized to borrow said sum under Mass General Law's Chapter forty-four, take any or any other enabling authority or take any other action relative thereto. The Capital Plan Committee approved this article. The Finance Committee recommends for borrowing. I needed two-thirds. I'd like to have a unanimous. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of adopting Article fifty-six, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article fifty-seven, will the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to lease three point nine one acres of town-owned land located at Zero Airport Road and designated on the Town of Rock with assessing map number seven, lot four, in accordance with all Massachusetts general laws or take any other action thereof? This is going to be a two-thirds vote also, but the Finance Committee refers it to the board of selectmen. Or to the town administrator.
This is a small, it's almost four-acre lot of land at the very end of the industrial park that has been sitting on our rolls for a long time. It's sitting doing nothing. It's an opportunity for the town to either sell or lease the land and make some capital.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? All, any other discussion? All those in favor of adopting Article fifty-seven, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article fifty-eight, will the town vote to raise it appropriate or take from available funds a sum of forty thousand dollars for feasibility and schematic design and engineering study of the Rockland Veterans Memorial Stadium or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article fifty-nine, will the town vote to raise it appropriate or take from available funds a sum of six thousand dollars for replacement of fencing and huts at park or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends approval from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number sixty, will the town vote to raise it appropriate or take from available funds a sum of seventeen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for a new two thousand and sixteen John Deere Gator for field maintenance or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends funds from an undesignated fund balance. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Will the town vote to raise it appropriate, Article sixty-one, will the town vote to raise it appropriate or take from available funds a sum of seven thousand dollars for new bleachers or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends funds from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Will the town vote to raise it appropriate or take from available funds a sum of eight thousand, two hundred dollars for replacement bathroom stalls at the Rockland Veterans Memorial Stadium or take any other action relative thereto? Tonight, the Finance Committee recommended to pass over. All those in favor of passing over Article number sixty-two, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article sixty-three was withdrawn. Article sixty-four, will the town vote to raise it appropriate or take from available funds a sum of two thousand and forty-two dollars for a new field painting machine or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends funds from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of the article signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Well, Article number sixty-five, will the town vote to authorize the Water Commission is to take from the water undesignated fund balance, the sum of five thousand dollars with a like amount from the Town of Abington for the purpose of purchasing a heavy-duty hauling trailer or take any other action relative thereto? The purpose or reason to transport the mini excavator to various job sites, Finance Committee recommends funds from water fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article sixty-five, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article sixty-six, will the town vote to authorize the Water Commission is to take from the water undesignated fund balance, a sum of seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars with a like amount from the Town of Abington for the purchase or purchasing a heavy-duty pickup truck or take any other action relative thereto, which to replace a two thousand and seven F-150? Finance Committee recommends from water fund balance. All those in favor of adopting the article signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article sixty-seven, will the town vote to raise it appropriate, a sum of one million dollars to replace water mazes prior to roadway reconstruction currently in progress? And to meet such appropriation, the town treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen is authorized to borrow one million dollars under Chapter forty-four, Section eight, dash, five of the general laws as amended and supplemented, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes for the town therefore and take any other action relative thereto? The purpose is to upgrade to the water system. Capital Plan Committee approved this. Finance Committee recommends borrowing to be paid from water revenue. This requires a two-thirds vote. I'd like to get a unanimous. All those in favor of adopting Article sixty-seven, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article sixty-eight, will the town vote to authorize the Water Commission is to take from the water fund balance, a sum of thirty thousand dollars with a like amount from the Town of Abington for the purpose of servicing and upgrading the four existing filters at the Myers Avenue Water Treatment Plant? Or take any other action relative thereto? The reason, the filters are in need of metal restoration. Finance Committee recommends funds from water fund balance. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article sixty-nine, will the town vote to authorize the Water Commission to take from the water undesignated balance, a sum of twenty-five thousand for the purchase or purchasing water hydrants or take any other action relative thereto? And the reason, beginning an annual replacement program to bring the system up to date for the safety of the residents. Finance Committee recommends funds from water fund balance. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number seventy, will the town vote to authorize the Water Commission is to take from the water undesignated sum, undesignated balance, a sum of fifty thousand dollars for the purchase or purchasing water meters or take any other action relative thereto? The purpose is, the ongoing meter program. This was approved by the Capital Plan Committee. The Finance Committee recommends funds from a water fund balance. All those in favor of adopting the article signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Articles seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three and seventy-four were withdrawn. Article seventy-five, will the town vote to amend the Rockland zoning map as shown on plan filed with the town clerk by moving the following parcels of land shown on the Rockland Assessors maps, lots eighteen and forty-three on Rockland Assessors Map eight, lots eighteen and forty-three on Rockland Assessors Map eight and eighteen and forty-three from the R-two residential zoning district, inserting them in the I-two industrial zoning district or take any other action relative thereto? Finance Committee refers to the resident and to the planning board. Tom Henderson.
Just to clarify, this was, Article seventy-five was passed out. In addition to the warrant as amended, the motion was made second to amend this article to remove lots eighteen and number forty-three and add Land Court Lot sixteen and Lot A. And the reason is, is the petitioner had submitted a, what they call Form eight plan and reconfigured the lot lines of this lot. When it came in with Lot eighteen and forty-three, it was actually going to have some conflict as far as the uses that exist there right now. In the additional hand packet, there is a, there's a map that is included. Again, it's Lot sixteen and Lot A on the small map that's included in your packet. This is, has less of an impact than the original petitioner's article. And one of the issues was the home that exists there. If we rezoned it, we would have made the house non-conforming and would have had the victim residents that lived there. So, it's only lots A and sixteen for the petitioner. So, this was as amended, Mr. Moderator.
I think you have a question. Do I have a question? About where it's located?
This is located on Wayman Street, right at the curve as you come from VFW Drive. On the right-hand side, it's the Newcom property. It's in the handout that it's Article seventy-five as amended.
As Appendix B?
It's not in the warrant. It was an additional handout with the books out in the hallway.
Motion to approve as amended? Sec, I have a second. All those in favor of adopting Article seventy-five, I'd like to get a unanimous. As amended, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article seventy-six, I'm not going to read the whole thing. This, will the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen and our Board of Sore Commissioners to execute and deliver in a form satisfactory to town council? One, a written release and abandonment of its rights in a fifteen-foot-wide paved access road in the location shown on the subdivision plan forty-B for Webster Street. I'm going to, I'm going to refer this to the planning board and maybe you can explain further.
Mr. Moderator, this was in our article.
Mr. Moderator, John Loughlin is here from the Sewer Department.
I'm sorry. Said planning board, that's why. Mr. Loughlin?
Hi, John Loughlin, Superintendent of the Sewer Department. What this does, it takes, there were existing easements before that forty-B was developed that gave us access to our pump station off of Woodsbury Road. The new easements that are in place, this was all reviewed by Attorney Galvin. It still gives us access. It lets us go in between some residence property to service any sewer problems that would, that may arise. So, all it's really doing is replacing former easements with new easements that give us the same opportunities.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Ryan. Do I have a second? Second, any discussion? All those in favor of adopting Article seventy-six, signify with a show of hands. I'd like to have unanimous. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article seventy-seven, will the town vote to amend the general code zoning bylaw Article five, four fifteen, dash, thirty-eight, four, registered marijuana dispensary, RMD-A two, from, shall have a gross floor area of no less than twenty-five hundred square feet or in excess of twenty thousand square feet, to, shall have a gross floor area of no less than twenty-five hundred square feet? This was put in by the board of selectmen and the planning board, it deferred to the planning board.
The planning board unanimously supports this article. And just to, this removes the twenty thousand square feet excess. We found that existing buildings for a couple of projects that came in for registered marijuana dispensaries, the twenty thousand was caused an undue restriction. This doesn't, this still requires the zoning board of appeals to review the project and they can, they'll still have to look at it. This doesn't grant them a permit depending on the size of the building. So, it would still go through a special permit process of the zoning board of appeals. It just removes the twenty thousand square feet.
Do I have a motion? Motion to approve. Do I have a second? All those in favor of adopting Article seventy-seven, signify with a show of hands. I'd like to have unanimous. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article seventy-eight, will the town vote to amend the Town of Rockland zoning map as shown on plan with the town clerk by moving the following parcels of land that are listed below? This area is located east, I'm reading the last sentence now, this area is located easterly of Wayman Street and northerly of the east-west parkway to the Town of Hingham line or take any other action relative thereto? And we're referring to the planning board.
Planning board unanimously recommends this article. Just for clarification, this is on the northwest side of Wayman Street. On the northeast side, it's already H-one. This has just given us the development opportunities for that H-one district on the opposite side of the east-west parkway along that Waymouth industrial strip. And again, to clarify the difference between the H-one and the I-two is the hotel and registered marijuana dispensaries.
Motion? Second. All those in favor of adopting Article seventy-eight as printed, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article seventy-nine, will the town vote to amend the Rockland zoning map as shown on plan on file with the town clerk by moving the following parcels of land shown on the Rockland Assessors Maps, nine, twelve, thirteen, twenty-six, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two on Rockland Assessors Map number nine, on the Rockland Assessors Map number nine from the I-two industrial park zoning district, inserting them in the H-one industrial park hotel district or take any action relative thereto? Recognize the planning board chairman?
Planning board unanimously supports this article. For clarification, this is the piece of property that's to the left of the reservoir entrance, behind Duck and Donuts, that travels all the way behind the hotels to behind Home Depot and exits onto a small area on Pond Street. We've had a few developers that have inquired about this property and our concern is they really have the only option of a forty-B which really doesn't give a lot of oversight and a lot of restrictions. Adding the H-one brings in the possibility of a hotel. This would not disconstitute approval of this project, any type of project. It would still need to go through the regular special permit process. Butters would be notified and we make sure it doesn't have an impact to those butters. And again, the registered marijuana dispensaries, but again, this lot wouldn't pertain because this would be within the five hundred feet of a residential area. So, this is strictly intended for the hotel. No development is planned or proposed, but some things have been tossed around and we want to make sure that we don't end up with something that's detrimental to the neighborhoods of Turner Road, Colby, Wilson. We want to make sure we have the oversight with the special permit process.
I have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor of adopting Article seventy-nine, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Thank you. Article number eighty, will the town vote to accept Mass General Law Chapter one forty, Section one thirty-nine, which waives fees charged for a dog, for a license for a dog owned by a person age seventy years or over in the town with said waiver approved upon proof of age and proof of veterinary service in the resident's name or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends as presented. All those in favor of adopting Article number eighty as printed, signify with a show of hands. All those in favor, that's a vote. Article eighty-one, will the town vote to adopt the bylaw under Chapter one seventy-seven of the town's general bylaws that states no fouling of sidewalks by dogs? All right, before we get to that, you talked about, yeah, but the Finance Committee recommended also. This is, I guess, pick up after your dog. Am I going to read the whole thing? It tells you if you don't, you're going to get fined. The Finance Committee defers to the town clerk's recommendation. Do I have a recommendation or from the town clerk? Do I have a motion to accept? Motion to approve. Do I have a second? All those in favor of adopting Article eighty-one, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number eighty-two, will the town vote to rename the roadway known as the Bill Delahunt Parkway to Gold Star Memorial Parkway or take any other action relative thereto? In speaking tonight with the town council, he tells me that this isn't legal and this is not a legal article.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I've reviewed the article and under Chapter two ninety-one of the Acts of two thousand and fourteen, the authority to manage and really control the roadways within the Southfield redevelopment area falls to the Southfield Redevelopment Authority. At some future date, that enabling legislation calls for these roads to be turned back over to the town. And at that point, the town could consider renaming it. But at this point, the exclusive authority for managing, controlling that roadway falls under the Southfield Redevelopment Authority.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a point of order, please.
All right, I will let you make the point of order, but-
Thank you. It'll be brief. I'm just in contrarian with council. I submitted this for a review to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts House of Representatives Chief Counsel, and they rendered an opinion that, and I'll again be brief- that, and I'll again be brief as we're all tied and want to get out of here, but the Act grants authority, minutes for control of a land use zoning and development decision, which we've done earlier tonight. The future date that council mentions for the subsection C of Section 19 of said act is that no later than January 1st, 2015, so that future date has passed. The authority in the master developer will take all action necessary to transfer the applicable town control of all existing public ways, or ways maintained and uses public ways located within the Southway Nebula Station. Each town shall accept the applicable portion of such way or ways as a public way in said town. Furthermore, and real quickly, again, their final rendering was the Act does not explicitly grant a right to name such roads to either the authority or the municipality, nor does it explicitly restrict either from doing so. Therefore, I would say that the Act, as again, through the legislature, which was passed, and I worked with a senator who was the main sponsor on it, the Act is not clearly state or not state. Therefore, by Mass General Law's Chapter 3940, power is vested within this body. I would like to make a motion to consider Article 82 as written.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to have to go with Mr. Clifford's, I'm going to have to go with Mr. Clifford's, that it's illegal. He is the, he is the town council for this, and that article is going to be ruled illegal by the chair.
One more further point, isn't it up to the Attorney General to declare whatever is rendered here to be legal or not?
I am taking my advice tonight from, you know, personally, I don't care which, what you do, what either one of the town does, that's up to them, but right now, I'm taking the direction from Mr. Clifford, our town council.
Well, it's unfortunate that I did it that way, then.
Now, I need a motion to dissolve the annual town meeting. Second. All in favor? Thank you for coming.